I think that's enough charge. There should be, but once it's up, we'll find out.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, people see them up there.
I figured this is gonna be on the screen, right?
You can make the numbers.
Oh, you put in. I'll get it out of there.
We gotta put them in there because we know some other city. The council that loves me. Now, that's to all the city managers and chief of police as I want to.
And finance director.
Well, at first got on, everybody locked out. I mean, we had one person at City Hall, and that was Sharon Good. And if everybody else, oh, one reception person was there. And everybody else kind of just left all of our head people all of the time.
I think it was Melissa.
Melissa, yeah.
Julie, Julie and I came on right after.
Yeah, Julie was there. But it's a good thing Julie pretty much knew everything. Speaking of her, I didn't want to have a service on that office. Someone that you don't want to listen to. That's the thing, I thought they're gonna say they're gonna spend the night so they can do something. They want to do it on.
Yes. Making me a little nervous.
Good question. I have a question for both of you. Do we need a sort of liquor if you're not gonna be doing it for a song?
Most of the people might.
We need to get.
I will pick up everyone. Your ABC and then she and I can sign with the receipt permit.
It does? Then you're gonna do it.
It's like I said, we really didn't sell that much alcohol last year. Very, very low. So, so we can get it.
I would handle it. We just have themself solve very hard.
I think we had maybe three glasses of wine, maybe a beer, and we haven't had anything. Didn't even pay for the permit.
Let's see what John. I'll check with John again. See if he can just get.
That's what I would do. I don't think it's. I mean, if I thought it was, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, it's all of these.
503, you are picking off the Thursday, June 20th regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. We'll begin our paper workshop.
Thank you, Mayor Clappy, and to members. A special welcome to members of the community. I know that an hour of municipal finances is not on top of everyone's list going on. I appreciate you coming here to learn more about the budget for the next year. I wanted to start with a overview of the vision and strategic plan goals of the City of Clear Lake that the council has set. These are the guiding principles for how we appropriate our expenses for our for our, how we allocate our financial and human resources. Our vision that the council has established. The City of Clear Lake aspires to be a beautiful, clean, safe, friendly, layfront community where people want to live, start a business, vacation, and retire. The strategic goal, plan goals of the community are to make Clear Lake a visibly cleaner city, make Clear Lake a statistically safer city, support economic development, improve quality of life with improved public facilities, improve the image of Clear Lake, ensure fiscal sustainability of the city, and make sure that we continue to update policies and procedures to current government standards. So, in our budget session today, this is our brief outline. We're going to take a quick look at the economic outlook for the state of California and the City of Clear Lake in general. We'll do a quick budget overview. We'll do an overview of all of our funds and an overview of the general fund. And then each of the departments will talk a little bit about their budgets, kind of focusing on anything that is unique to the budget for fiscal year 2425 or any special changes during the fiscal year that are not generally part of the fiscal year. So, the state of California, the economic outlook can be summarized as manageable challenges and moderate growth. In 2023, the economy in the state of California was generally strong. There's a little bit of cooling in 2024 that experts attribute to the tech industry slowdowns and a sluggish labor market. And of course, we're all feeling the pain of inflation and high interest rates. There is a little bit of personal income growth that is staying steady slightly above inflation. And we're seeing small increases in population in the state of California, and experts attribute that to the rising housing prices and sluggish job markets across the United States. The state of California has multi-year budget deficits, but they also have healthy reserves, and they also have the ability to loan money from one fund to another to help manage their budget. So, without unforeseen economic challenges that the entire state would face, they're in a relatively stable position. Regards to the City of Clear Lake, we're almost a small microcosm of the state of California. Our local economy is stabilizing. Our sales tax revenues were, are relatively stable. We are budgeting a slight decrease of about $25,000 in revenue for fiscal year 2425. But we see that property, property tax revenues, we anticipate seeing a slight increase as well as a slight increase in other revenues this coming year. So, it'll pretty much stabilize. Population growth trend is positive for the City of Clear Lake. Each year, the state provides a percentage of population change from year over year in January for the state allocation limits. And for the first time this year, we've seen an increase in population compared to the last four years. And it's kind of an interesting trend. So, the City of Lake Howard has a 0.12% increase in population from January to January. And the unincorporated areas of the county have a 0.27% increase, while the City of Clear Lake has a 1.14% increase. So, we're really seeing a greater increase than your broader county. And we're looking at down the road a little bit and past fiscal year 2425. But I just wanted to note that the infrastructure investments and the development projects that the city is focusing on is really what's going to be driving revenue increases for us in future years and increase the prosperity of the city and the impacts that we can make in reaching all of our goals that you've established for the city. The budget overview, the budget is a structurally balanced budget, which primarily means the expenditures are equal to or less than the estimated annual revenues and that we're not using any one-time funds to pay for the ongoing expenses of the city. So, basically, annual revenues are paying for the ongoing costs of doing business in the city. And we're, we're looking at, as I mentioned previously, relatively flat revenues. And we do have increased costs to cover salaries and salary increases as well as, for the first time in a long time, we're getting close to being fully staffed. And Chief House will talk about that a little bit later. So, we definitely have to find cost reductions. We've worked hard to find cost reductions so that we can cover all the salary increases with the stable revenues that we have. And, and an example of that are new positions that are allowing us to reduce consultant fees in order to be able to have cost savings. We're also bringing contracted services back to the city. For example, we're managing transient occupancy taxes, business licenses. The accounting department will be, rather than having our consultants do it, doing our annuals and saving a significant amount of money now. We will be having special funds support the general fund. Generally, every year, funds like gas tax, measure, measure B, measure P will pay for shared costs like fines contribute there. This year especially, we're using some fund balance in measure P and state law enforcement's aid fund to pay for equipment and supplies that if we were a little more flush in the general fund, we'd probably pay for those there. But we'll be using a little bit of fund balance from these restricted funds to be able to pay for those services. And once again, capital project funding is very strong, significant investment structure projects into increasing prosperity in the future. So, all funds overview, we have budgeted for an estimated $43.2 million in revenue coming in. And our budgeted expenses are at $65.6 million. We have a use of fund balance of $22.4 million. Some of that money is restricted funds for a specific purpose that has come in in future years. The first one you see there is the $12.8 million, the measure B water fund. We had, we took out the $14 million one and we spent around $1.4 million of that in preparation for the major growth projects that will be going on this year. So, we received those funds in a prior year, which is what makes them unbalanced and money using them now. So, we have $1.8 million again in capital projects where we received it in previous year and will be using it this coming fiscal year. And the $5.6 million is the PG&E settlement funds. It's the remainder of the settlement funds that we'll be using to fund Airport Road, a portion of Airport Road and 18 Avenue. And $1.6 million in housing funds and $600,000 in other funds. Taking a quick look at the general fund, you'll see again the $5.6 million, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. But we have projected revenues at $9 million and expenses at $15 million. The use of fund balance at a little bit over $6 million. And it's worth noting that the, well, I guess the way I'll say it is that the $5.6 million from the PG&E settlement money currently sits in an equity account on the balance sheet as restricted. And so, it's not even in our fund balance. And so, what we'll do in our accounting is we'll transfer it to fund balance. And then we budgeted to transfer it out to capital projects where we'll be spending it on Airport Road and 18 Avenue. So, that makes up 5.6 million of the $6 million use of fund balance. The other $439,000 is for general fund expenses. We've done an estimate of the fund balance of the general fund. It's as of 6/30/24, and our estimate is $586,000. So, we can potentially cover the cost of that with where we stand at the end of this fiscal year and even have a 150 thousand dollar buffer. But if, for, for those who aren't familiar, we, it can take a few months for us to realize all the revenue that comes in. So, for example, the gas tax, the maintenance and repair act, the, the taxes are collected. And say if they're collected in June and then they're reported to the state in July, then the state will pay us in August. And so, it really won't be until late August until we know exactly where we are in the balance. But that is the anticipated estimate for now. And we are going to move on to city manager.
Thanks, councilmembers. Just a couple of quick items here. I mean, I think you're familiar with this because you've done most of the currently recently under actually the council. But community builder related production and consult services that Director Wall has mentioned earlier. It's, we've been using a contractor to do our plant checking, building inspection services for a while. You know, we've had various ways of providing that service over the last few years, but kind of been successful in having a person fill that position. So, we've kind of readjusted that. Our chief building inspector, planning examiner will be starting on Monday. And then we upgraded, they can permit technician position to community building specialist position. Recruitment for that is out right now. And so, those two positions will allow us to really eliminate the need for contracted outbuilding inspection services and plant check services, which has been quite costly. The real benefit for that is now we essentially do building inspections two days a week, which is somewhat limited. I mean, contractors have gotten pretty used to it, but we'll really be able to offer those services pretty much full-time throughout the week with, with the staff in place. And, you know, we've, we'll, we'll try to schedule it certain way. I know the council has talked about implementing rental registration program. And so, that's the plan is these new staff will also be responsible for spinning that program up and getting it going. So, I have to make sure there's time dedicated to not only putting that in place, but there'll be a lot of inspections associated with doing all the rental house inspections. Feel like we've had some struggles over the last year or so on some of our customer service and timeliness of response. And I think there's a few reasons for that, but I think a lot of it has been related to our contract services. We've done a little bit of reorganization in the department. I feel like things are improving quite a bit. Excited to get this new position over next week. And so, we'll see small overall cost savings, I think, in the services, probably $30,000 to $40,000 over the year. But, you know, it's gonna be starting a new program and increasing availability to the public. One thing kind of related to city manager, management analyst, who had this position for a little while. Unfortunately, our incumbent fell in love and moved away. So, we had to refill that position. We were able to do that internally with another really strong candidate. So, well, it's funded the same way before. It was under finance in this budget. We still have some special funds, CBG funding, a little bit of housing funds, and then through finances, but you get it. That person is reporting to me and they're also working because they came out of community development and have a good familiarity with our process. They're working on some process support, planning, help streamline some things there. Of course, grant management, which has been a pretty big task for us over the last few years, which is good. And then working on some additional special projects. That's really, do I have a little few questions? Oh, I have to talk about. Okay, so, you know, the, these aren't really new ones, but what we have here is the sports complex. This is showing about $9 million. We actually have commitments of additional money for that. I mean, probably even all of this revenue will be realized in this fiscal year. But I did just want to point out that, you know, we are in $13 million, right, to with committed funds for this project. But we'll have apparently this fiscal year. Airport Road project. So, this is sort of the airport project in general. We previously titled that Airport Road. And then 18 Avenue is a separate one. So, that project is funded, sitting there, just waiting for our litigation to be resolved so we can get forward. And then the other big one that's, that's in this fund right now is Arrowhead Burners Bank Road Project. This is CBG disaster recovery funds that we're trying to move forward. And then there's some other things in there. These are the big ones that were mentioned. We have the funding that we have in place that we're doing, the design work for Laker Drive. Of course, that's a little over a million dollars. Damn Road Roundabout Design, a little over half a million. We have some money committed from the county for the skate park renovation. We don't have enough to move forward. That's about a $700,000, $750,000 project. We have 400. That's something that we ask for community project funding from Congressman Thompson for. We haven't gotten indication at this point if any of our projects will be funded. So, then there's, there's a few other small ones. Finishing up on the senior shares. Okay, now.
All right. In admin services, we have full, three full-time employees, myself, the deputy city clerk slash human resources technician and the secretary. And together, we manage the front counter customer service. We manage human resources risk management along with the city clerk functions. And this coming fiscal year, the most notable increase will be the added costs of the upcoming November 5th election for the three council seats. In risk management, as you know, we belong to the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, or CERA for short. Under CERA, we pool our funds to pay for general liability and workers' comp claims, also called self-insurance. We purchase commercial property insurance through CERA from Alliant Insurance. We also purchase crime bond, cyber loss insurance, pollution liability, and several other programs. So, in short, we're seeing increases in the frequency and severity of claims. For example, the verdict, the nuclear, what they call nuclear verdicts, where juries award astronomical dollars to plaintiffs at the expense of public agencies. And we're also seeing reduction in capacity by. And we're also seeing reduction in capacity by insurers and inflation, of course. So these factors drive up claims and the related costs along with hardening the market. Many insurers have ended coverage in California. You're seeing that in also also in residential commercial insurance. Um and there's very few new entrants into the market. So additionally, as our payroll increases, our costs for insurance increase because our dollars of payroll is how our premiums are determined. Um so those will continue to increase. I don't think we've ever seen a decrease, but that is the nature of insurance and workers' comp. So those are my highlights. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So is there any movement at the state? I understand that there are some talking going on about insurance rates and what can be done in Sacramento.
I believe that there are geared toward residential insurance.
But not for city municipalities?
Many pools are the smaller pools are forming, merging with the larger pools. And so basically what's happening is, you know, you've you have several smaller pools uh which have special districts, they've got um fire protection and they're they're we're looking to make a larger pool. And so we've got in CERA, just this past year, we've got um special districts, we've got like four fire protection districts now, which, you know, I've been the board director for about seventeen years and this has just happened in the past couple of years. So we're seeing a larger array of members in the pub uh in the public agency arena. So basically the the smaller pools are dissolving because it's just not fiscally kind of important, of course. It's not, it's not working out for them fiscally, right? It's not manageable for them to.
So by expanding the pool, you've diversified. We're consolidating the different groups. It's kind of cool. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so very quickly, I'm going to touch on unemployment insurance and counters unfunded accrued liability. We have Fund Six O Two that is our unemployment insurance fund. And this is a fund that when payroll is processed, deductions are taken out of the general fund and put into Fund Six O Two because we're self-insured for unemployment insurance. And we currently have a surplus in the fund. Our projected fund balance at June thirty of twenty twenty-four is two hundred and close to two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And in we've put a budget for the expenses out of that account for the year for twenty-four, twenty-five at fifty-three thousand dollars. The previous three years combined, we the expenses we paid out have been basically twenty-six thousand dollars. And so having a fund balance of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars is a considerable surplus. So we've made the decision to suspend those employer payroll deductions for unemployment insurance for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So that will reduce having to take about fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund. And we clearly have enough balance in there to manage unemployment payrolls. Wanted to make you aware of that. And then I, as you know, the last two years, we have realized prepayment savings for the unfunded accrued liability portion. And you'll see up here that um it shows the prepay amounts and it also shows the monthly amounts times twelve and then the savings. So paying our unfunded accrued liability in July will save us twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I said hopefully that will that will actually in place.
Yeah.
Does it was up to seven hundred or something? Oh, I'm sure I heard Cal first. But we're continuing to monitor it.
I mean, this, I mean, we've done calculations on this before. I mean, the twenty-five thousand is one thing, but over time it makes it usually very significant.
And last year, we actually didn't have uh any unfunded accrued liability for the pepper classification safety and miscellaneous and this year. There's a little bit this year and of course we'll always pay that amount off.
Because that's if there is a downturn, that's.
There we go. And Chief Hops will be talking about this.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm going to briefly go over the Police Department General Fund. Um salaries this year are slightly up due to some anticipated salary increases and increased staffing. Uh the staffing realm, um right now we have thirty-four positions that are filled. We have thirty-eight total positions. Uh we had two police officers start a couple of days ago on Monday. Um we have two more police officers and one dispatcher that are in the final stages of the background process. That'll be starting in the first couple of weeks of July. Um so that'll fill up the police officer category.
Which positions were those, were you?
Which positions?
Yeah.
Just two vacant, oh, what's first name or?
No, so you've got a police officer opening.
We have two police officer openings right now.
And you've got the SRO position.
Uh that's uh we don't count, I mean, it's not counted as one of our total ones.
Okay.
We have the abilities, this will fly now. So two police officer positions, one code enforcement officer position. The code enforcement officer was moved to a different classification earlier in the year. Um it was a little bit of a pain increase for them. Um so that position also will be filled in with uh weeks of July as well as the the one vacant dispatcher position. Um unfortunately, it looks like we will lose one dispatcher around the same time.
And he is a sergeant promotional?
Uh right now, we have an acting sergeant filling the vacant sergeant spot. Assuming at some point maybe the promotional, that person gets it, well, all our positions will be filled.
All right, thank you.
Except for like the one dispatch one that more likely will be leaving the police. She's been uh debating its career change for the almost eight years she's worked here and is looking at doing it numerous, numerous times. Finally now pulling trigger on that, so.
Well, good luck for her.
So we hope the best for her. Um so those are the increases, main reasons for the increases on the Police Department. Some areas where we have significant savings uh in the vehicle lease and maintenance. Uh we're dropping from two hundred and seventy thousand uh last year to hundred and ninety thousand this year. Unfortunately, it's not going to last forever this level. We are going to need to later this fall, we will order some more vehicles that we anticipate will come in next summer. So um the budget next year will go back up some, it's probably not going to go up as much as it's gone down. Um but it will, we'll go back up a little bit. Um special duty pay uh has dropped down drastically um from um worth of seventy-five to forty thousand. And shift differential has gone from fifty to about twenty. Uh was higher than needed based on some uh calculations and how it was budgeted last year. Uh so those are dropping down significantly. Um other than those areas in the general fund, there's there's no major changes. Some money's going to move around from some item, buying items to other line items, but no other significant change. Uh Measure P, um this one, not not too many changes. Um a little bit of funds removed from categories to other categories. Uh special duty pay went down um from ninety-eight to sixty-six. Um so that is positive. And uh as you see in the bottom there, um that dis required a little use of some of the fund balance of approximately a hundred and thirty thousand. Code enforcement, we'll start with the general fund. Um not too many changes here. Uh we had a couple minor changes in the abatement money is going to go down um from twenty thousand to ten thousand. Um and then uh one I didn't put on here, but uh another summary abatement one is also dropping down. Those are mainly due to um the Cal Recycle Grant. We haven't had it for several years. Um we've been steadily applying every opening for that. On Monday, we found out we rewarded the funds for that, which is just over four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which um based on what we applied for, assuming all of our bids come in correctly, we'll be able to abate about thirty-seven different properties. Or I think about twenty-five or houses or home loans or different things. So we won't, we don't plan on using as much on the regular abatement money, but we still need to leave some in there for unforeseen emergency things to come up. Um ABA funding, uh we've dropped from sixty thousand to fifty thousand. Um that is mainly in part to a um relationship we have with the uh Waste Solutions. Uh we are taking some of our RVs up to them and they're handling the disposal of those for a uh a very good price for us. Um so with that, hopefully we will be able to continue that relationship with them, get them RVs, motorhomes, trailers, those types of things on a regular basis and free up. And hopefully leave most of this fifty thousand that's left for abating vehicles, which are a lot lower price. And um we should be able to abate a a lot of vehicles if we can keep the good job.
What kind of frequency, how many can they take, how often of those RVs?
Um right now, we're we're trying to do one every Friday.
Wow.
Some of these, which one?
The one uh at the shopping center at Foods and.
I think that's still there. The owner's been working, the owner's been working on that one. Um they won't take that one, it's been recently burned, so due to the material on there, the ash, um they won't take it. Um so we're trying to get something worked out on that one. If it's been a while, it's rained and stuff's washed off, they.
Oh, I've seen a couple up there and I'm surprised to see RVs up there.
Yeah.
So thanks for that.
The RVs vary based on for with the company we have a contract with, it's based on the length of it, the stuff that's inside it. But typically they range from around two thousand to forty-five hundred. Uh unfortunately, most of the ones we do are bigger ones that are in the thirty-five hundred plus range, so. Um and clearly in a normal year, we're not going to tow fifty-two of them because we have nowhere near the funds. So hopefully with this deal, we can, you know, if we can.
Are they all, are they all coming local areas or do you? They're coming from outside?
I mean, a lot of the ones we get, they have been not registered for so long. We ultimately do not know where they came from. Um but we, I mean, we get ones from Clear Lake, we get ones from other surrounding counties, other places in the county. But there's no like one major place we get them from. Uh and then code enforcement, CBG, um there's some slight increases to cover um vehicle leases, some uh minor salary um things. Um break the total a little closer to the the funding we um we we get on the grant of roughly five hundred thousand per year.
How stable is that? Is it going away?
Uh well, we are, we are waiting, hopefully any day we will find out. We submitted an application on the last round for three years of funding. So hopefully we will get a positive letter from them, so in the future. After this three-year period, it's our plan to not um utilize CBG funding for code enforcement anymore. Um the requirements are getting more strict and uh future programs are going to require a big portion of any funding that we get to be used uh for like housing rehab stuff and all that, which, you know, there's good intent behind it, but it just limits what we can do. And so uh our plan is to get this next three-year package and then try to phase it out entirely.
Thank you.
So do you, do you plan on having code enforcement be able to fund itself after the three years?
Not, but I should have been more clear, that doesn't mean like laying off the code.
No, no, I mean, that I meant that you're self-sufficient, you're self-sufficient, which is really kind of the plan of anything you're getting grants is not to have to give them every year if you become self-equipped and somebody can do that, so yes, thank you.
Okay, speaking of self-sufficient. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Um I wanted to first start off with the Recreation and Dance Department. As I say, a lot of times when I do my council presentations, my goal is to be less reliant on the general fund. Um so in the last, and this is going to be going into my third year, I think, of being a micro department. Um I am working um very hard with um possible partnerships and even out-of-county partnership, out-of, well, out-of-Clear Lake partnerships that could help bring in more revenue and be beneficial for both partners. Um I don't want to say mostly, I think it would be at fifty-fifty um if it all goes right. And it could be very lucrative for the department as well as the potential partners. Um we are working on more classes that although we have a lot of free classes we're offering now and and events, I'm working on some things that could possibly make a little bit of revenue or at least break even. Um and then obviously I'm I'm always looking for grants and and things like that and sponsorships and donations. And the next one, I'd like to talk about the youth center. Um so the youth center is um open now. Um and we have a lot of free classes and we're averaging anywhere from eight to fifteen to twenty kids every, almost every class. Um again, there's a lot of free classes, um but we, I just posted on Facebook several classes that um people are paying for and they're booking up fast. So um the desire for people, you know, just because they have a dollar amount attached to them, as long as it's a reasonable dollar amount, people are still wanting to do things, which is is wonderful. We also have the monthly bingo, which has been generating um some positive revenue. And I've also been partnering with local food businesses that um have also made generous donations for us, allowing them to sell their food there. So it it's benefiting both parties. Um and again, looking for grants and donations and sponsorships is a huge priority with me. Um another thing I do want to say that there are increased costs in this budget that were proposed due to the expansion of everything. We need more supplies and a larger shed and everything else. But um so it it'll, if all goes right and like keep moving forward with everything, um it it should balance out.
Are you and your child out? Is that photo, is that you and your child?
That's Chief White Star.
Yeah, that's Chief White Star.
Okay, perfect works. So here we have Measure B and gas tax, I kind of put them both together. These have um revenues that are meant just to be spent in these areas with specific rules attached to them. So for Measure B, they share one of the key items, we are paying up our water truck and dump truck with our final payment being next month.
Nice.
And we, um recently this past year, we did purchase an excavator, so we have an excavator payment uh attached to this particular fiscal year. We would like to purchase a vehicle, our PT truck is starting to run down. Be on repairs, so we're looking to purchase another truck. We are also moving to use Cartograph, which is a system with an open government that will take the place of our current uh public work service request that we use through Iwork. Cartograph will put us all into the same umbrella, which we will spread between budget. Cartograph will allow us to track our assets, let us know um when our maintenance is due, letting us know how our assets are depreciating um and track all of our service requests and map them all as well. Um this work going to spread between multiple budgets at all. It will also um incorporate facilities requests and service requests between all of our facilities. Um also in our Measure B, not our Measure B, our gas tax, we have an on-call tree removal service contract that we currently have this uh contract for with two different contractors that we will spread out between the two, so I have money allocated to that one. Our tree removal that is beyond. to that one, our tree removal that is beyond the ability of our public works crews to do better, near service lines and stuff like that.
And their local businesses?
One is local, please, please place tire on the list, we try to keep it local. Um, the last one is traffic signal repairs. More often, we're seeing large traffic signal costs due to um accidents and they're not always covered in your insurance, so trying to get some budget allocated to that area as well.
Is it like stop signs and?
Um, no, not sausage. We could do that. These are like the, we recently had one that cost, I remember the. Our parks department, our budget is pretty stable. We have the same level of service, which has been great this past year. Supplies, we did not, I did not have a supplies budget last year, so we, we have one this year and we are going to install a car hole port, part of which will be delivered tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and then.
Probably Mr. Smith happy.
We're going to, we are going to replace some trees that have been knocked down, pulled out or um dying and then add some cobble rock in some of the DG areas for beautification, try to make our park look nicer.
They're working on the trees right across the street, it's made those.
Yeah, yeah, they've been working on it there. Um, we also are looking to have a shade screen retractable for the bench shell to prevent shade and someone blocking out there as well.
Oh, we're looking at Austin Park.
Yes. We're working on that. I would send an issue with that.
Okay.
Um, Public Works City Engineer. We have a kind of a short, smaller budget. We don't have a lot of needs here. We have engineering retainer services and we have payments for our Esri services uh for our GIS. And then we have state water resource annual permit fees, uh, lake bed management pressure permit fee, our county agreement, uh, with county resort, water resources for hydropath monitoring and sampling that we have entered into a three agreement with them, so this is just part of the three year allocation.
Some final thoughts as we start to wrap up the, the budget session. Reminder that the budget is again structurally balanced, that the estimated revenues we have coming will allow us to pay for the ongoing business of running the city. And mentioned our, our financial and resources are focused on meeting the goals of the city council that will bring us a cleaner, safer city with improved facilities that citizens and surround the community will recognize and value. The fiscal year twenty four, twenty five proposed budget will allow the community to build on our past successes as we go into the future. And lastly, for those who are not familiar, I wanted to let folks know that um while we've done kind of a, a broad strokes overview of the budget, we have an online budget book that can be accessed from the City of Clear Lake's website, and I'll just do a quick uh showing people how to get there. And in the budget book, you're actually able to click into some of the tables and get more detail. Yes, then let me do a quick share, show people. So the easiest way to get there is to search for City of Clear Lake Finance Department. And when you get to that website, just scroll down a little bit, you'll see under fiscal year budgets, this is the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five proposed budget, which starts with a message from our city manager. And then there is kind of a table of contents. Each of the departments that has a line underneath it allows you to click into it and go to the reports and you'll see that you can, you know, click in and access more data. So it all starts with the City of Clear Lake Finance Department page and then you can click in. So you will go ahead and open up for questions and comments before we wrap things up.
Thank you.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, we have the Clean California Grant, which we have purchased shade structures that will be installed here. Coming soon.
Is that the cereal?
Yes.
Shays, yeah.
Like a shade sale.
Thank you. Is that also an exercise for?
No, just.
Just the kids. Yeah, I want to thank city manager and staff for the inspections and funding that's forward.
Yes.
That's been a long time coming. We've been asking for it for a while.
Well, we had it in place and then we got your hand.
I like that.
Well.
HDL didn't do the greatest job.
No, that's important to improve our housing stock for people that have lives with D landowners.
I will have to look into that and get back to you to tell me if you understand that question. We have, um reached out to a number of shop camera owners that are advertising and we know that they are booking stays and we've reached out and we've been able to bring last, early count was about, about a week after uh notifications went out, we had at least six different owners who had come into compliance right away. And I keep seeing the notifications pop up and I, I haven't done a thorough review, but we're going to see response.
Websites like Airbnb and?
Yes.
We, our previous contract with HDL, they did the searches for us and then, you know, contacted them and all that. So we have the software on our own now, so we can go at any time um identify anything that has an active listing or has been active in the past. You can see the rate that they're charging, which nights are booked, all that, so it's very difficult to. Do we have, do we have a similar tool on the rental side, the mobile rental side that we do certain things? Um, not quite in the same way, but we are in the process of uh onboarding a new system, which will aggregate almost all of our data that we collect now in various ways, and so um I'm really looking forward to giving a demo to the council on this once we get it up and going, but um, you know, a few, we'll be able to, this is where we're going to get our database of rental properties, because they can pull that information for us. Um, and has ownership data, and if you own twelve properties, whether in the city or not, we'll automatically be able to dig into all that and then we can look and see um how many code enforcement violations you've had here, other areas, all sorts of data. We pulling in our police reports, calls for service, all that type of stuff. We're going to be putting our public works, uh, work order requests and that type of information there, so we'll really be able to dig in and see, oh, maybe we should be focusing road approvals in this area of the city, because this is where we've got nice construction complaints. Uh, we can do all sorts of analysis on layering layers of data and see why they have so many calls, questions here, so. So I, I think it's going to be um really valuable tool for us moving forward, kind of trying to decide on those different situations.
So, so one of the things involved, like I always say, do with the rentals is if you're going to rent a place, you have to have an inspected person ask your investor. Otherwise, if you get caught with first day is by about five hundred dollars, second day's another five hundred, and they just keep adding on to it, and eventually you come into compliance. So that might be something that we might want to, like, look at if they're going to have rentals, maybe the inspection to even start before they can rent it, it has to be inspected. So that's just a thought to be able to get them on the list, number one, and then unless you know the client, if they haven't got on the list, they have to come into compliance like for ten, twenty four hours before they get signed. So back there, they're pretty strict on that. We might not want to be that strict, but it gives an idea of what we can do to get the list, so.
Well, I'm not sure how they grab that information that you're deciding to rent a property for.
They're nice renters, that's why she wants to rent them. So last one, we're looking at Measure B, Measure P. Um, have we done any tracking on where sales, where marketing are coming from, inside the city, outside the city, outside the county, like we've done in the past? I know when we were doing um research for the airport development, we've done some, I'm, I'm just curious, has he ever worked um similar to that or like that, but no?
I mean, as far as um where people are spending, where they're going on, yeah, we have actually even a lot better data than we did at that time. I mean, you know, we were relying on a consultant for that as well. Uh, and now we have that software in-house. So it's, it's been really helpful when we have developers or specific brands ask for information that we can tailor those reports.
Before, identifies the home accidents, what's happening.
Well, I mean, this, most of this data does not actually give us transaction data. We see that eventually through sales tax, but it's not up to date. This focuses on, um we act, it tracks everyone's cell phone.
It doesn't also show what we're losing by our own present and through the works.
Because I mean, that's important, you're trying to attract it. Home Depot, we want to know how much everyone here is spending at Home Depot or some other approval sort of, right?
Or restaurants.
Well, no, yeah, just.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Take a recess, we'll, we'll reconvene at six o'clock.
Thank you.
At six o'clock, yes. At six o'clock, the regiving meeting.
Test. Test, test, test.
Jack, Brian. Check.
Test, test, test.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. We'll get started in momentarily. Welcome back, everyone. We are continuing the Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting, regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Madam clerk, uh, madam clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Councilmember Pardog.
Here.
Councilmember Slotin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Claffey.
Here. Councilmember Kramer, could you lead us in the pledge?
Glad to. Hi, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Remain standing. Uh, council member Pardog, could you lead us?
I'd be honored, sir. Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, we ask that you would come and be with us tonight to lead and guide us, that we may do good work for the those living here and working here and visiting our good community. Father, ask for a special blessing on those who are working out in the streets, for those who are making lives here a little bit better place to be. And for those who are traveling for graduations or vacation, that they would uh have safe travels into their destinations promptly and safely. We ask for these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. You, Mr. Flora, any changes to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
I move that we approve the agenda presented.
Second.
A motion from councilmember Slaton, a second from councilmember Kramer. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with the unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, madam clerk. Item one, presentation of June's adoptable dogs.
Ella, she's an approximately two-year-old Min Pin mix. Ella may be a bit shy at first, but once she gets used to you, she's a bundle of love and joy. She even does very well with other dogs, small and large. Want a buddy to swim with this summer? Ella's perfect, perfect for that. She loves water. Ella is spayed, microchipped, up to date on all vaccines. Come meet your new best friend at our shelter on Airport Road. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members. So for the animal control statistics for uh so far this year, two hundred and forty-four dogs have come into the shelter. Two hundred and eighteen have left the shelter, thirty-three being rescued, a hundred and seventy-one were returned to owners. Twelve adopted and two have been euthanized with a live release rate of ninety-nine point four, or excuse me, ninety-nine point zero four percent. Our current shelter population is forty-three dogs. Uh, ninety-five microchips have been um done so far this year and ninety-seven free vaccinations.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Lieutenant, how many dogs have been euthanized in the county?
Um, I don't know.
The idea, gen- general?
I, I wouldn't be able to give you a number. I know it's quite a few.
Quite a few more than we do.
Substantially different.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Moving on, on to item G, public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. When you come up, we, we limit public comment to about three minutes. We have a different location for the microphone, as you just saw. Please state your name and your city of residence. If you are on Zoom, feel free to leave a comment in the tool there and we will read that out after the folks live have a chance to speak. So first speaker, Brian Hughes.
Hello, everybody hear me? Is that, am I close enough? All right. Brian Hughes, attorney, Highlands Water District. Oh, first off note, nobody actually asked, I have to say where they're from. Uh, Brown Act doesn't require that. Just a quick note on that. Um, second, at the last meeting, one of the questions was, is it common for a municipality, or I'm sorry, for developers to pay for the water service? Uh, infrastructure improvements to their property. I pulled the city of Clear Lake housing element uh that you guys have published, and in that you actually referenced this concept. I'll read it to you. Developers are required to install water lines that connect to the applicable water system and pay connection fees according to the particular entity. So just reference, you guys should know that. I also haven't received any emails inviting Highlands to come and present. I don't know if that was a mistake by me. The attorney last time referenced that any real confusion is usually due to the person providing the comment. Last time, he stated that, or at least referenced that it was our, my firm's mistake for confusing the board about inviting you to come and talk. So I just wanted to make sure, and I apologize if I uh misconstrued something, but the mayor had invited, said we're always welcome. But I haven't gotten an invite yet to have the presentation. So I'm kind of wondering where that is. I didn't notice that anything about water was on the schedule tonight. Tonight would have been a good one.
Just to be clear, I don't think I offered an invite for you to present, although we could certainly talk about that in the future. I just offered an invite for everyone to come join the city council.
That's great. Yeah, no, it just. I've been asking to have the conversation and then you responded saying, well, you're always welcome. So I interpreted that as you were inviting us to come and talk because the three minutes is very limited. So I pulled up the twenty forty general plan because I wanted to know, like, well, does the city actually intend to have a conversation with us? And by this, it seems to think that you do. On page one sixty-six, where it talks about public facilities, some of your goals are a sustained supply of high-quality water delivered through an efficient and safe system to support the city's existing and future populations. Great. To get that, you have a couple objectives. First, work with water providers for adequate water facilities, infrastructure to meet demand. The city shall work with water providers to expand water treatment and conveyance infrastructure to meet the city's needs and population growth. The city should help develop a strategy. The city should work with water providers to develop capital improvement plans. The city should work with water providers to determine priorities and area for infrastructure improvements. I haven't actually seen any of this. This was, I don't know when this was done, but it is in recent. So again, I'm inviting the conversation with Highlands to discuss these things. I haven't received the invite. I'm concerned that we won't get the invite. But I'm stating that, and again, we are open to the conversation as you guys have seemed to indicate that you want.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Uh, Corey Jones.
Evening. My name is Corey Jones, uh, resident of Clear Lake. And I appreciate the opportunity to express my frustration with the road conditions. I know you guys uh saw the last meeting and that was a great presentation on where we're at. But I, as I go down the roads, I don't feel that a lot is being done. And I know that it's probably, you know, falling on, you know, a subject that's probably dead and then, and then gone, you know, the train has left the station and a lot of this, what can be done, but I've, I felt like I've owned my house twenty-five years now and just moved up here full-time the last two years. And I'm just considering, maybe this wasn't the right move for me. Maybe it's uh, you know, the city of Clear Lake looking forward. Uh, if you guys are considering that uh roads, private roads, public roads, and not making any uh, you're not given a whole lot of opportunity. You, you presented in the presentation last oh, uh, uh, last time you guys had a meeting, uh, a way to forward to, for private owners to become uh, uh, for the city to take care of our roads. And uh, it didn't seem to me like that was a, a viable way because the people uh live on my block are basically um, you know, don't have a whole lot of money. So, and it's to, to start, I think she quoted whoever the director was, I don't know who that was, but a million dollars, you know, to get things started. Uh, nobody has that kind of money and nobody, so um, I just wanted to make sure that I read my statement and got it out. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, all residents and visitors are subject to measure V. Uh, living in, living in Clear Lake, it's, I feel, it feels that some folks living on so-called private roads and are help, are helping to pay for improvements for residents living on public roads. The point is all, we all use every road. You offer the way for residents to apply for a private road and to a public road consideration. My question is, how many residents have chosen to take you guys on your offer uh, of that way of uh making a, a public road, a private road to a public road? Is that, you guys have any data on that?
City manager, do you?
There's, there's been one um going blank on the name of the subdivision over by the senior center. I don't know how many residents, well, maybe there's a dozen residents on that street that, that's the only time that's happened since we. Okay, so there's a street over uh the subdivision just north of the senior center. Um, they came forward uh shortly after the council adopted this policy probably three years ago. Um, and went through the process. That's the only one that's happened since the council adopted this. Yeah. It, well, in, the, the policy's been in place, I would say about three years.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, so that is the last submitted uh card here. If anyone would like to come forward and make a, a public comment, you're welcome to do so now. Seeing none in the chamber, madam clerk, any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item H, the consent agenda. Any council members would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Open up to the public, if anyone in the audience here would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Madam clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are no comments that anyone wishes to pull an item.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion from councilmember Kramer, a second from councilmember Slaton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, madam clerk. Item thirteen, confirm assessments in the total amount of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents for city-funded abatements in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code, Chapter Ten, Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four. And Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a public hearing to confirm assessments for delinquent abatement costs. The purpose of the hearing is to consider and act upon any and all appeals of proposed special assessments. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the appeal and adopt a resolution to deny or amend the assessment or deny the appeal and adopt a
or deny the appeal and adopt a resolution upholding the assessment for abatement of real property. Inspection and abatement warrants were issued by a judge of the Lake County Superior Court for the properties located at 31916 Street, 3662 Cottonwood Street, 14870 Clement Drive, 14081 Woodland Drive, 3628 Johnson Avenue, 16052 19th Avenue, 3287 Third Street, and 15582 Sharp Drive. The City of Clear Lake contracted with Case Excavating for the abatement of the eight real properties as mentioned. Property owners were invoiced for the cost of said abatements. Property owners failed to remit payment for the costs of those abatements. Attached to the staff report is the proposed resolution confirming assessment and statement of expenses. Staff recommends that council confirm all assessments as proposed. The mayor shall read the resolution by title only. A roll call vote shall follow the reading of the resolution. Council members have been provided copies of orders to abate, billing invoices, and photographs. The first property is 31916 Street. Total amount is $16,193.22. That's the before photo. After. Next property is 3662 Cottonwood Street. Total amount is $6,053.22. 14870 Clement Drive. Total amount is $22,883.22. 14081 Woodland Drive. The assessment amount is $7,053.22. 3628 Johnson Avenue. Assessment amount is $8,093.22. 16052 19th Avenue. Assessment amount is $6,703.22. 3287 Third Street. $6,503.22. And lastly, 15582 Sharp Drive. Assessment amount is $5,853.22. And that's the end of my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any questions from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
I have one.
That's Member Slaton.
It looked like some of them had actually people living in it.
One of them, the one on Woodland Drive had people living in RVs. 19th Avenue as well, 19th Avenue as well.
Any additional questions? If not, I'll open it to the public. If you have a question or comment, please step forward. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council, Councilmember Perdok.
Mr. Lambert, just a quick question. Do we use city equipment to do the abatements, or did Case do all of it?
On these ones, Case did it all, yeah. There are some instances where we do abate them ourselves, but this one was more cost-effective to have Case do them all.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I see no other questions or comments. I will take a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-24, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, confirming special assessment and approving liens against real properties located at 31916 Street, 3662 Cottonwood Street, 14870 Clement Drive, 14081 Woodland Drive, 3628 Johnson Avenue, 16052 19th Avenue, and 3287 Third Street, and 15582 Sharp Drive for the cost of abatement in accordance with Chapter 10 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
I have a motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 14, confirm unpaid administrative penalties and approve recordation of liens in the total amount of $110,070 in accordance with the Clear Lake Municipal Code, Chapter 10. Mr. Lambert.
Okay, so this one has, this agenda item actually has two action items with two different resolution numbers. So we'll go over the first one first. I'm going to provide you the binder, which you guys already received on your tablets. But here's the binder of evidence for the first nine properties. So again, this is a public hearing to confirm unpaid administrative penalties and approve recordation of liens. The purpose of the hearing is to consider and act upon any and all appeals of proposed confirmation of administrative penalties and recordation of liens. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the appeal and adopt a resolution to deny or amend the administrative penalty or recordation of lien, or deny the appeal and adopt a resolution confirming the administrative penalty and approve the recordation of the lien. Code enforcement officers determined violations to exist at the properties located at 14081 Woodland Drive, 3864 Liddell Avenue, 14095 Villaway, 14101 Villaway, 16052 19th Avenue, 14870 Clement Drive, 3557 Ukiah Street, 3603 Peony Street, and 15523 33rd Avenue. A notice of violation outlining the violations and corrective actions required was issued to the property owner of each property. Said property owner failed to reach full voluntary compliance in a timely manner. Notices of administrative penalties outlining the violations and corrective actions required, as well as administrative penalty amount, were issued to the property owners of each property. Property owners were notified in writing that all penalties must be paid and an appeal filed or a payment plan scheduled within 21 days from the date of notice. Property owners failed to remit payment for each outstanding administrative penalty. Data ticket the city's contracted processor of administrative penalties mailed a second collection notice to each property owner who had outstanding administrative penalties. The property owners of each previously specified property have failed to remit payment for outstanding administrative penalties. It should be noted, due to a lack of voluntary compliance, the properties located at 14081 Woodland Drive, 3864 Liddell Avenue, 14095 Villaway, 14101 Villaway, 16052 19th Avenue, and 14870 Clement Drive were abated by code enforcement through the means of an abatement warrant. Violations continue to remain to exist at 3557 Ukiah Street, 3603 Peony Street, and 15523 33rd. Attached to the staff report is the proposed resolution confirming unpaid administrative penalties and approving the recordation of liens. Staff recommends that council confirm all unpaid administrative penalties as proposed and approve the recordation of liens. The mayor shall read the resolution by title only. A roll call vote shall follow the reading of the resolution. Council members have been provided copies of administrative penalties, billing invoices, and photographs. The first property is 14081 Woodland Drive. The penalty and lien amount is $18,750. Again, some of these photos will look familiar from your last staff report. The next property is 3864 Liddell Avenue. The lien amount is $600. 14095 Villaway. The lien amount's $5,000. 14101 Villaway. The lien amount's $8,400. 16052 19th Avenue. The lien amount's $12,750. And I do want to add on this one, the city's had to abate that property twice under abatement warrants. 14870 Clement Drive. The lien amount's $750. 3557 Ukiah Street. The lien amount's $12,520. I do want to add a bit of information on this one. 3557 Ukiah Street. Three extensions were issued to the property owner. One in March of '22, one in April of '22, and one in June of '22. A compliance conference with the city attorney was scheduled, and the property owner attended in January of 2023. They agreed to make significant progress within 30 days and be in full compliance within 60 days. The city agreed if full compliance was made within 60 days, the city would reduce the fines by 50%. They did not adhere to that agreement. 3603 Peony Street. The lien amount's $10,050. 15523 33rd Avenue. The lien amount's $30,750. Again, compliance conference was scheduled with the city attorney in January of '23. The property owner attended via telephone, agreed to make significant progress within 30 days and be in full compliance within 60 days. Again, the city agreed to cut the fines in half by 50%, but the property owner did not agree to, did not comply with the agreement. Property owner has failed to also submit any appeals on his citations. And that's the end of action item one.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I will now open up public hearing. If you have a comment, please step forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor. However, we did receive a comment from the owner of 3557 Ukiah Street, which I can read aloud.
Please.
It states, "I, Christie Thomas, will not be able to attend the hearing scheduled for June 20th at 6:00 PM due to my work schedule. Regarding the property, slow progress has been made. The building is coming down. I have been doing dump runs. The tall weeds slash grass is being taken care of as time permits." And that concludes the statement.
Thank you.
Can I add one note?
Please, Mr. Lambert.
The case was opened in March of 2022.
Thank you. And so last year, there was a, a meeting. Has the property been inspected since they failed to meet their obligations after the 60 days?
Yes, many times.
Thank you. Any other, so I will close the public hearing, bring her back to council. Any questions or comments here? So we have two items here.
Do you want to act on one first?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-25. Read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, confirming unpaid administrative penalties and approving liens against real properties located at 14081 Woodland Drive, 3864 Liddell Avenue, 14095 Villaway, 14101 Villaway, 16052 19th Avenue, 14870 Clement Drive, 3557 Ukiah Street, 3603 Peony Street, 15523 33rd Avenue, in accordance with the Chapter 10 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Perdok. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the second action item, I have a property that is within close proximity, so I shall recuse myself from this role.
I also have a property within the boundaries of this action, so I need to recuse myself as well. Thank you.
You're too far away. Okay, so I'll take a motion on Resolution 2024-26.
Vice Mayor Overton. Mr. Lambert is prepared to give a short staff report on this.
This isn't the same, is it? So, okay, all right.
Okay, so again, I'm going to give you the evidence on this case. This is action item number two. Code enforcement officers determined violations to exist at 3855 Monterey Drive. A notice of violation outlining the violations and corrective actions required was issued to the property owner of the property. Said property owner failed to reach full voluntary compliance in a timely manner. Notices of administrative penalties outlining the violations and corrective actions required, as well as administrative penalty amount, were issued to the property owner. The property owner was notified in writing that all penalties must be paid and appeal filed or a payment plan scheduled within 21 days from the date of notice. Property owner failed to remit payment for each outstanding administrative penalty. Data ticket the city's contracted processor of administrative penalties mailed a second collection notice to the property owner for each outstanding administrative penalty. The property owner failed to remit payment for outstanding administrative penalties, and all violations remain to exist at 3855 Monterey Drive. Attached to the staff report is a proposed resolution confirming unpaid administrative penalties and approving the recordation of lien. Staff recommends that council confirm all unpaid administrative penalties as proposed and approve the reportation of lien. The vice mayor shall read the resolution by title only. A roll call vote shall follow the reading of the resolution. Council members have been provided copies of administrative penalties, billing invoices, and photographs. The property is at 3855 Monterey Drive. The lien amount's $10,500.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Lambert. Is the property owner here to make any comments? Any council members have anything they'd like to say on this property?
Can I add a little, little, little side note?
Sure.
The property owner did file appeals on six citations. After review, all citations were upheld, including by a third-party hearing officer.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this item? Madam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council and I'll accept the resolution.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-26 and read by title only. The resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, confirming unpaid administrative penalties and approving a lien against real property located at 3855 Monterey Drive in accordance with Chapter 10 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
I'll second that.
Just in a second. And if you would go into your portal.
Madam Vice Mayor, the portal unfortunately only allows for one vote per item, so if you'd like, you can do a roll call vote or a voice vote.
Well, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Slaton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Overton?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to item fifteen, adoption of the City of Clear Lake's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Director Wells.
Mayor Claffey, Councilmembers. Uh, the purpose of this public hearing is for council to consider adoption of the City of Clear Lake's budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. For the benefit of attendees who joined us at six P M., the city held a budget workshop at five P M. this evening to go over the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget, and council had an opportunity to make comments and ask questions. At this point, staff recommends that council adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty, adopting the City of Clear Lake's budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five.
Thank you, Director Wells. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I will open it up to the public. If you have a comment, please step forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I am now closing the public hearing, bringing it back to council. Councilmember Perdok.
I'm going to like to thank the staff for the professional manner in which you presented the budget at our, um, prior meeting for the budget hearing. Very thorough, and I also appreciate the transparency that it's available on the website. For anybody who missed that, they can, they can look at our budget.
I would echo Councilman.
Would I?
All right, thank you all. Um, if there's no other comments, I'll look for action.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake adopting the City of Clear Lake fiscal twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget.
I have a motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Director Wells, can you just, um, refresh our memory? Where can we find the budget on the website? Can you just talk us through it real quick?
Absolutely. And you can Google City of Clear Lake Finance Department, and that will take you directly to Finance Department webpage. Scroll down just a ways down, and you'll see fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five proposed budget. You can click in there. Uh, the information in the budget is able to, you're able to click in for more detailed information to get a better look. And I'll also note that previous budgets are available to be accessed online. If you access fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four's budget right now, you'll be able to see the, uh, adopted budget as well as the actual revenue and expenses incurred, uh, to date.
Thank you, Director Wells. Appreciate that. Moving on to item sixteen, adoption of appropriations limits for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty-five and designating the formula to be used for calculation of the same. Director Wells?
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. The purpose of this public hearing is for council to consider the adoption of the state appropriation limits, more commonly known as the GAN limit, for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five and designating the formula to be used for calculations of the same. It is necessary for the council to approve the attached resolution adopting an appropriation limit for each fiscal year in compliance with proposition for the GAN limit. The city is well under the calculated appropriations limit and has the capacity to significantly increase the size of the budget, should that become necessary or possible at some time in the future. The resolution appropriations limit calculation is Schedule A in the agenda. The reference material from the Department of Finance is attached there as well. Staff recommends that the council move to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, adoption of the appropriations limit.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Any questions here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I am now closing public hearing on this item and bringing it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, the resolution, and read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake adopting the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five and designating the formula to be used for the calculation of same.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Perdok. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item seventeen, adoption of the City of Clear Lake's fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Director Wells?
Again, the, uh, purpose of this public hearing is for council to consider the adoption of the resolution improving the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five fee schedule, Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two. Uh, the City Council is being asked to review and consider adopting the resolution for the fee schedule. The city reviews and asks council to approve the fee schedule annually. Two changes are noted in red in the proposed fee schedule. Both of these fees are pass-through fees that the city collects from permit applicants, and then the fees are then paid by the city on behalf of the applicants. The City Planning Department acts as the lead agency filing a variety of documents with the County of Lake and filing secret documents with the Department of Fish and Game. Both agencies charge fees associated with the filings. The city is adding the fees onto our fee schedule at a rate that these agencies charge. In fact, you'll see on the fee schedule that we actually link to the County of Lake and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife websites, where applicants can look at the exact fees that they will be charged that we will then pass through to these organizations. The city provides the service to businesses and individuals to expedite filing times and maintain compliance as the lead agency. I'd like to note that the city can reasonably justify a number of fee increases and has instead chosen to freeze fees for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five other than these two previously mentioned fees that are pass-throughs that we're asking council to approve tonight. And staff recommends that, uh, council approve the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five fee schedule, Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from the council? I'll open it up now to the public. If you have a question or comment, please step forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm now closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council. Uh, Vice Mayor Overton?
Oh, and I haven't gotten through all of this here. Um, is there a vendor's fee in here? Because I did not see a vendor's fee for like these vendors that are all over the place.
You're talking like a sidewalk vendor or something?
Yeah. Yeah, most, most. So is that under, like, they have to come in and get a business license? Okay, because I, I've been to some of them. I haven't seen things posted, so.
Well, there's, there's a lot of those folks that try to avoid compliance, and so.
So what is the fine for them not complying? Do you want to have a fine for them?
Well, I mean, I guess we would normally issue them administrative citation if they were not complying.
I, I think they just see more and more of them popping up in places that I don't see. See business license on them, and I think we need to get a handle on it before it gets too carried away.
Well, Chief Hobbs recently adjusted code enforcement's schedule to cover Fridays and weekends because during the week they would not be operating, and then knowing that we have kind of reduced staff certain times, they were popping up more, but he has already, um, initiated that within the last few weeks to, to try and tackle it.
I just don't, I, I just see more and more, and I just felt like we need to get a handle on it before it gets too carried away.
Vice Mayor, is that a problem with, uh, more vendors or just our recreation director putting on more events?
No, it's not those vendors. It's that, it's that they're starting to be like in off-the-wall places and stuff like that, so there's not necessarily, and I think they're getting on people's private properties. Um, and so I don't know if you're getting complaints about that, but I know some of them were on private properties that weren't the owners of those properties, so I just see that it's becoming more and more.
We do. I mean, they're not always in a safe location, but I mean, primarily the complaints that I personally received is from existing businesses that have to pay sales tax and play by the rules. Hop up and do that, like, you know, Valentine's Day and that, that thing.
Councilmember Perdok?
No, I'd just like to echo the Vice Mayor's comments. I actually had people coming to me and complaining because they have to operate a business, pay the taxes, pay for the brick and mortar, and these, uh, inner businesses are not. So, thank you.
I mean, I'm all for everybody trying to make money, but I believe that if they're out there, they should be paying the taxes and everything, just like everybody else. They need to have their tax I D. numbers and stuff like that to be able to participate in running a business, because that's what they're doing. They're running a business.
Well, just so the council members know, I mean, our planning staff have created a whole handbook for these folks, so, um, if, you know, if code enforcement sees someone out there, they send them in the planning department, we'll go through the handbook with them and let them know, you know, what they need to do to, to get in compliance with the various rules.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, I'll take an action.
I moved it. Uh, we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, adopted after fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five fee schedule.
I have a motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item eighteen, presentation and discussion of tobacco use in the schools and community. I see some folks coming up here. Chief Hobbs?
Oh, I'll start this one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'll give, uh, intro, uh, while we get started here, but, um, so it's been a priority of the council to, um, address.
You guys can come up.
Address, um, issues with tobacco use and the problems that result from, and, um, you'll recall over the last several years, um, there's been interest from the council and direction from the council in trying to adopt a tobacco retail license ordinance. Um, we applied for state funds, I believe, three times, and have never been successful in that. Um, and so kind of continued discussions about how to make an impact there. This has become a very serious problem, particularly in our schools. Um, and so a few things going on here, this is kind of a culmination, just sharing a lot of information with the council and the public, and then kind of some general direction, moving forward on a few things as we wrap this up. So, um, after a conversation that we had, well, I, I should, I'll go back. Mayor Claffey and I met with, um, Lakeport's mayor, city manager, uh, chair of the Board of Supervisors and staff from Public Health a few weeks ago. Um, and there is kind of a plan in place to have the county actually establish tobacco retail license ordinance that would cover, uh, both of the city jurisdictions as well, and so we would adopt an ordinance delegating that authority to the county to enforce on our behalf. So, um, that was supposed to happen this week, and there were a couple complications there, but Public Health, um, Director and staff is here, um, to kind of give an update to the council on that. But first, I wanted to introduce Greg Dammer from Blue Zones, who I'm sure all of you have met previously, and then, of course, our illustrious Superintendent of Schools. And so they're going to go through kind of an overview of the issues, um, and, um, some general benefits to various policy things, including tobacco retail license. Then we'll have Public Health come up and share some comments and then have a further discussion from there. I'll put the presentation up and we'll turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, um, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Um, glad to be here this evening. Uh, just want to start and say that, um, tobacco prevention in Lake County is a complex topic. We're taking a very narrow zoom in to Clear Lake and Conacta Unified School District, and then zooming out on the tool of tobacco retail license ordinances. We're not even covering the man-made epidemic that is, um, affecting our community here, not even getting into the, the real weeds into that, but, um, we'll start out, um, I'm going to let Becky take it from here to share her experiences.
What do you think? Um, I, I'll, I'll talk quickly so we get that big picture off the screen real quick.
Is that you trying?
Yeah.
So I think most of you have heard me talk at some point or another, whether I've ventured ears at other meetings or at, um, activities, or we've invited you to things. This has been something that's been, um, really in the forefront of my mind for the last couple of years. And my wish tonight was that I could have come here this evening saying, hey, we're getting better at it. Um, but unfortunately, we're not. Uh, a few years ago, um, I was collecting vapes that were being collected in our schools, and I had a nice little bucket, the big bucket, that I would collect them in, and, um, luckily, Chief, you, you weren't quite there yet, but our prior chief, um, Chief White used to meet me once or twice a month, and we would, I would exchange the vapes out to him because we were collecting them at such a rate that I did not want them on the schools. I didn't want them in my principal's offices, so I would collect them. Now, um, a couple of things have happened moving forward a little bit. One was Chief Sepeda took my bucket away because, uh, unfortunately, it wasn't really the best way to store them, so you got lucky with that one. And the second thing was, um, we're very grateful that we now have an S R O. on campus who does that collection for us and does it the correct and safe way. So, um, again, thankful for that. Uh, the second part where it's not getting any better with our kids is, um, just human nature. Kids get a little better at learning how to hide things as time goes on. And then the really unfortunate piece is, um, the devices themselves have become so much more concentrated. Um, the timing for the kids using them is spread out longer. So it's a little more difficult for us to see them and capture them because it used to be at a really regular time. They, they, um, the, the kids needed to be vaping, so it was much more obvious for us. Um, again, that, that's much more frightening. Um, we're actually getting, I believe, much worse in our crisis as opposed to better. Um, the kid, our students themselves will tell that, um, they didn't even realize that there had been legal changes with flavors because it's so easy. Nothing ever changed for them in getting access. So, um, that's frightening. And I think I've shared with you in the past, I've talked to a lot of high school students about this, and they're very honest and open. Many of them, um, would like help to figure out how to get away, but it's so addicting that they become so entrenched and so involved immediately. That's one situation. The second situation is we're, we're removing them now from our elementary kids. I've had students as young as first grade, um, with vapes and, um, throughout elementary, so. And it's not just here in Clear Lake. It's not just here in Conacta. It's not just here in Lake County. It's a problem everywhere. Um, but as always, I always appreciate the City Council and of course, our city manager. I won't call you illustrious. Um, but willing to listen and reach out and support us when we bring these crises to us, these problems for our kiddos. Obviously, it affects them. We see it daily as educators. We see the lack of attention that it brings. We see the drop in grades. Um, and I'm frightened when I talk to, um, medical probably friends and, uh, people that we know in the medical association because we, we don't know what's going to happen five and ten years from now from these kids and their, um, health developments from what they think. So, uh, again, I wish I could have come here and said, we're doing a lot better. Instead, I'm coming here and saying, please help us do a lot better because our kids deserve more than that.
Becky, will the, will the new S R O. help that situation before you think that we now have one again?
To a point, yes. Um, you know, in anything like, in, in this crisis, we know that, um, our S R O. being there, our disciplinary action that we can take will help a little bit, but it comes nowhere near to solving the problem. It's not just a hammer that has to happen. Um, so when we come asking for more support from the city for things like, um, what Greg's going to discuss in a minute with the resolution, those are the beginning stages of really becoming, I believe, a disruptor in awareness. So it's not the heavy hand that's going to fix it. We're going to have to start with a heavy hand and, and some increased, um, disciplinary action, for lack of a better word. But then we need to bring in, um, deeper education, medical support, um, mental health support, all of those things.
And nowhere in your talk have you mentioned parents. What in the world's happening there?
Um, there's a variety of things. Uh, I would say that. Um, there's a variety of things. Uh, I, I would say that it's, it's, um, a spectrum of parents who maybe aren't aware, legitimately not aware of what's happening and going on to a middle kind of ground where it's, I, I've been told, uh, we don't know why you're so upset. When I was sixteen, I was smoking and that was much worse. So a lack of understanding that, no, this is incredibly worse. And then to the other extreme of, um, you know, parents that just aren't quite that engaged and involved with their kids.
How about some forums for the parents? Have you been thinking about doing that or have done that or?
Absolutely. Um, in, in those type of things, until you have something kind of like a disruptor like I'm talking about, you don't get their attention to be there. Um, you know, I, I held a giant meeting that I, I talked to the world about coming with social media and phones and I ended up with, I believe, um, four parents there. I had more police support than I had parents there. So it, it's hard to get them.
I was going to take a tragedy. That's too bad.
Great. So now we're going to get into the weeds. So this epidemic, it's, it's a technology and corporation-driven epidemic. Um, the youth vaping epidemic really started rising and spiking just about ten, uh, seven years ago, twenty sixteen, um, with Juul, uh, Pax Labs and Juul. Um, that's when vapes stopped being the Star Wars-looking-like devices that put out these huge clouds into these little sleek, um, USB-looking, um, products. You'll see the Juul there on the graphic, thirty-seven cigarettes worth of nicotine. This is Stanford Chemical, uh, Chemistry Diagnostics. So the tobacco companies will say how, what, what the nicotine levels is. No, you have to go through some intensive, um, diagnostics. So with the, the first gen, um, teen vaping, um, spike products, that was about thirty-seven, um, cigarettes worth of nicotine in one pod. And, um, I, so a little background on me, for the last ten years, I've done tobacco inventory surveillance, youth tobacco, um, work and then, um, joined County of Sonoma's Department of Health Services as tobacco code enforcement per, uh, uh, designee. Um, I've been honored to work in six different jurisdictions and our teams have won, um, uh, eight different tobacco retail license ordinances or ordinance upgrades, some of the, um, most innovative in the U.S. Um, and that's in Mendocino and Sonoma County. So we're not talking about some other, other part of the world. Um, so Juul, you have those. And the problem is, um, uh, regulation and legislation does not keep up with tech. And so during COVID, we started seeing the flume float. And I don't know if anybody knows about whipits, you know, nitrous oxide and, you know, little huffing. So, um, the tobacco industry wasn't even making, wasn't even playing. They're just mimicking whipits and I'll pass that over to them. So the flume float has three hundred and sixty-three cigarettes worth of nicotine. I talked to students at KUSD at the high school, Lower Lake, and some of those kids are going through one of those every two days. So we have, um, we have a level of nicotine ingestion that Public Health really doesn't even have a playbook. Um, they talk about poison control, actually, you know, we're, we're on that level. So, um, if that wasn't bad enough, um, in the last couple of years, the next, um, item came out called the Elf Bar. And as you can see, five hundred and ninety cigarettes worth of nicotine. And again, talking to teens, and this isn't all teens, but talking to teens here locally, one every two or three days. Um, the beauty, um, of this from a technology standpoint is uh, dosage is dependent, dependent on how much and how often you, you inhale. Um, and so if you need to get through a, 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 a class period without taking a hit, you can, we hear from students, I'm not a, I'm not a, um, addiction scientist, but we hear from students that they can go longer and it sort of corresponds with, uh, fewer catches, you know, because kids can sustain themselves. I talked to a City of Clear Lake staff member who uses the flume float and she, um, uses it what, four times a day to get through the day. So she's an adult, you know, she's not, probably has a different stress level. Um, your department, actually. Um, but, um, but, um, so again, when we talk about dosage, it's dependent on the user. Um, but with youth under stress, Becky could spend another hour talking about the, the ebbs and flows of withdrawal and then uh, using cannabis also to correct and then just throughout the day, the drama that goes with, um, blood chemistry being affected by this. So Elf Bar is demonic, um, but it gets worse. Um, two hours ago down the street, I bought an illegal flavored vape. This is called the Geek Bar. Stanford, I don't think Stanford's done diagnostics on these. They say they supply twenty-five thousand puffs. So I'm, I mean, maybe we're up at to a thousand cigarettes worth. Um, and that's disposable. It's high-tech. There's all kinds of electronic components. That's going into your landfills or will be soon. So that was sold to me. Um, the guy said, are you ATF? And I didn't look like it. And I said, no, and I'm not. And so he went ahead and sold me a strawberry Geek Bar. Um, so again, as we start figuring out what to do, the tech industry is four generations into, um, poisoning us. And in the U.S., there's no, um, there's no regulation of nicotine levels. The UK, Canada, um, other countries, the EU, um, caps nicotine dosage in these devices. Here in the U.S., we don't. And so the industry can do whatever they want. So now we'll get out of the weeds with the, with the products. Um, e-cigarette use, uh, use. So Becky, I'm not going to go into all the details of these because we have, um, the policy platform you can look at. Um, Liberty's team has all kinds of other great data. But Becky, what would you say would be, you know, from what you hear from students, the, the number of?
So, well, when we first started looking at the numbers, um, I went to staff and staff said, oh no, it's got to be higher. And our, at that time, I believe the numbers were coming and it was a different survey. It was not this and they were, it was around, um, I want to say it was like twenty percent or something, twenty-five percent of students using vaping, uh, in high schools. So we went, I went to staff, administrative staff that's working with the kids and they said, oh no, it, it's got, it's definitely got to be higher than that. It's probably around fifty percent. So then I went to the kids and when I started talking to the kids, the kids are said to me, oh no, not fifty percent. It's probably eighty-five, between eighty-five to ninety percent of kids using regularly or at least have used and have access to. And, and they get it. And many of them, like I said, many of them want support and many of them are just, um, you know, it helps them get to the end.
One student I spoke to said that he was taking three hundred, three hundred hits a day. He couldn't stop. He wanted to quit. His girlfriend actually said, what can we do for help? And I said, you need to talk to your doctor. Like, and he was eighteen, so, so we're at that level. So let's, let's carry on. We're going to go through these quickly. So again, um, an- another tool, um, it's disturbing the levels that it is here in terms of Lake County and, and our aggregate, um, rural counties. But, uh, again, what we heard in terms of students sharing their experiences. Okay, next slide. And then we have our, our, our tobacco-related illnesses in Lake County are off the charts. Move on to the next one. So it, it affects all of us. So now we zoom out. I'm just going to talk about the tool, which is a tobacco retail license ordinance and not even really going to get into, to all of the breadth that we can talk about. But basically, it's a safeguard. It's not a silver bullet. It's not going to stop all issues. But it's a proactive intervention and it improves compliance, um, with business standards and laws. And so, you know, you could look at it from a community development standpoint, uh, in encouraging, um, healthy, healthier tourism, staying with the brand of the city as everything is incredibly at, you know, incredible speed improving. A tobacco retail license ordinance fits all of that and helps protect teens. Okay, the next. So the purpose, reduce youth access and use of, youth use of tobacco, reduce legal sales of banned products, um, reduce tobacco-related health inequities, create a mechanism for policy adoption that's nimble and responsive to our local issues. So what we always say, it's a tool. You have an ordinance in place and when the industry unleashes this crap in our neighborhoods, then you have actually a mechanism to say, hey, we want to respond to this. The community takes charge as opposed to the industry being in, in charge of what we see in our neighborhoods. Next slide. So there's already regulation going on and this is what happens whenever there's, um, a consideration, then the industry comes out and says, we're already being regulated. So the FDA does, um, do operations in California. I just heard from my former colleague about two hours ago because she's out doing ops. She said, the FDA says they only reach about seven percent of stores in California a year. Um, sometimes it's once every five years and, um, often, even though they do have a penalty cycle, usually it's a first letter that asks the retailer what their recommenda- recommended, uh, self-intervention's going to be. So it's a toothless effort in general, unless you're just an insanely bad actor and dumb. So then you get to CDF, um, CDTFA and, um, that's an administrative license. It's a state annual licensure. You have to have that. You have people in Lake, uh, you have stores in Lake County that don't have a state license that are selling. I just dropped by one to check and they're still doing it. Um, and it's, again, it's minimal. Um, inspections are infrequent. The fines are usually inconsequential. Um, sometimes you can pull, if, if you have sway in your county, you can pull the state to come in and, and dig in a little bit deeper and then you see some fun fines happening. But we don't have a lot of pool, uh, pool currently in, um, Lake County. Okay, next slide. So, um, almost fifty percent of California municipalities have a TRL requirement. Um, our local neighbors, they're fifteen to twenty years ahead of us. Um, Mendocino County actually well ahead of Sonoma County in terms of the years of theirs. And Sonoma County has seven of their ten jurisdictions with, uh, retail policy. Cloverdale is one of the exceptions. It has a Muni code, um, uh, intervention as opposed to a TRL, but they're moving towards that. Santa Rosa in August is slated to pass a TRL. And then Marin County, of course, all of their jurisdictions are covered by TRL. So, um, in Lake County, we currently, correct me if I'm wrong, because we try to keep up with what's going on, thirteen current retailers. Um, but we're going to have additional ones coming soon. I'm sh- I'm assuming ARCO, like they always sell tobacco, will sell tobacco. Um, um, so that number is going to probably, uh, ratchet up and it depends on, um, what people want to do in terms of that. Um, in Lake County, um, there's a real correlation between density of retailers and people that are very low on the socioeconomic scale. Um, it's just, it's textbook. If you look at the Stanford, um, that Stanford tool, or you can look at, look at map, you can see how more vulnerable neighborhoods have higher density of retail, retailers, less don't. Um, okay, next slide. So then in terms of policy provisions, you have an annual renewable license to sell commercial tobacco. It's parallel to the states and it actually supports the states. Um, there's a yearly fee. These are recommended to be self-supporting. So you want a fee-based structure so that it's, it's not coming out of the, the direct community treasury budget. It's coming, um, the, the retailers are paying a fee for the, um, the luxury of being able to sell a highly addictive product, um, and deadly project, product. Um, there's compliance checks and violation enforcement, strict penalties for repeat sales to underage purch- uh, purchasers and penalties for sales, um, without licenses. I mean, that's a good one, especially in Clear Lake because you're going to need that. Um, next one. So this is an outdated picture. I went today and the retailer has gotten rid of some of the products, but there still are some products that should have a state license on those.
Question?
Yes.
Maybe it's not the right time yet. Is there a, a statistic that tells how much of these vapes are, uh, purchased through the internet?
Well, that's, that's a good question. In, in, in Lake County, well, and especially in, in, in Becky's realm, um, students, do you want to share what students are saying in terms of?
Well, I, I, they're telling us they're getting it directly through stores or they're getting it through a second person in a park. So the kids aren't going to do it.
In, in terms of online sales, so I've, I've been doing youth, uh, surveillance work for seven years and my son is, he just turned twenty-one recently, so can't do them anymore. But in two and a half years, he was sold to a hundred and five times in two, in three counties, um, Sonoma County, Mendocino County and, and Humboldt. Um, showing his ID. So go, you know, he was teenager showing an ID that's a, a real ID, not borrowed or stolen and, um, or fake and sold to. So it's, it's rampant. Um, that num- the state has numbers in terms of, um, estimates of, of local brick and mortar retail access versus online. That's, you're right. It's a complex arena in terms of assessment. So TRLs, they're not just window dressing. They're effective. When they're enforced, um, the local strategy is, um, known to reluse, reduce illegal sales to youth. And there's evidence-based research that teen initiation in a community where these have been established, um, uh, lowers by about fifteen percent. So that's not inconsequential. Um, it's, it's like if you have a boat that has multiple link, leaks. If your brick and mortar is one of the bigger ones and you have to choose which leak do we, you start there, right? And it also sends a signal to the community. And also, you know, um, the, just like this, this was a black market sale through a brick and mortar store. It's an illegal sale, not showing on the shelf. You know, I had to ask. I had to, I didn't know the product that I wanted. So he knew that I wasn't, you know, that I knew that, that I was at potential, that I was actually going to use the product. Um, and so that's black market. So you have black market going on in your markets. So it's illegal sales of products going on. And again, that's not unique to Lake County. And then that's me. Yeah. And, um, so again, this is just high level about the tool of tobacco retail. Um, and, and some of the perks. There's other, um, there's other analysis. There's other provisions you could hear about. Um, so that's just, again, an intro.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, questions?
I'm convinced that the last one you shared around was five hundred and ninety cigarettes. How much does that cost? Because I have no idea.
So fl- flume, flume floats, that wa- that was thirty-five dollars. Um, flume floats, they fluctuate. You can get them for seventeen dollars. And some vape stores, it can be twenty-nine dollars. Um, sometimes there's special discounting and promotions. Um, it really depends. It's all over the map, um, in terms of.
How many hits again were this?
They say twenty-five thousand, but again, I, I don't trust the, you know, that's, that's a marketing gimmick, right? Until Stanford gets to di- uh, doing diagnostics on that, we're not going to know. But the, the crazy idea is with the, the aerosols, which I haven't talked about, and the, um, the chemistry of the nicotine, the flavoring as well as the electrical cords and all of the e-waste, I mean, that is just, um, a nightmare.
Size is any indicator and say there's at least a thousand, probably more.
Some of it could be the battery. So the Geek Bar is really promoting, um, two, two battery levels and to, to have a, a more cloudy vapor exhale versus, so it's a, it's, it's a, it's a weird animal. I don't even dare begin to try to figure it out.
And this is strawberry, you say?
That's strawberry, yes.
How, how is it taxed?
The, well, tobacco is taxed, um, all through all different levels, but at the state level, they have, um, distribution taxes and then there's, there's, there's other layers of taxes. Um,
So it's not taxed as much as just regular cigarettes?
Oh, oh, vapes? Um, probably not because there, you don't have the same production tax layers from, from growing and, and, and farmed, farmed distribution. There's probably a different level. And also a lot of these are coming from overseas. Um, a lot of, a lot of these are getting in and not even, they're, they're skirting around even the, what I would call the, the fractured approval process for some of the project, products. So, you know.
Vice Mayor?
And is there, I mean, is there oversight about the danger of it? I, I mean, there's obvious danger, but since they're not, uh, excuse me. May I speak? Since there's, since, since they're coming from overseas, how do we know that, I mean, this could be the next fentanyl?
So I, I, I'm two months out of public health. I've been in public health for almost seven years. I'm currently free. I might be back into it at some point in the near future. So I'm, I'm no longer, uh, need to play obeisance to the public health infrastructure. We're too slow. We're just too slow. Our regulatory, um, structures are fractured. That doesn't say I don't listen to. That doesn't say I don't listen to our regulatory structures. I love the data, and I love some of the efforts that have happened. But it's just too slow. And this is why local jurisdictions are just taking over. Sonoma County, we have four jurisdictions that have banned e-cigarette products outright. And the city of Santa Rosa is planning to do that next month, or in a month and a half. So, you know, you get to decide. If things get to a certain level, and you're like, enough is enough, then you can pull some of those products. So, yeah, it's a fractured system. And what's next? You know, are we going to have, I mean, there's nicotine gummies in Southern California. That's probably on the horizon here.
Vice Mayor?
Well, we're not going to stop this. We'd like to say we did, but did we stop alcohol? You know, when we were kids, it was, "Don't drink, don't do this, don't," you know? And so, now we take the kids. But when we talk about parents, and, you know, not all parents, because I have two grandkids that have tried this, you know? And it was, I'm sure they did it behind their, my kids' back for a while. I mean, they suspected things. But it's not always the parents. It's just, my one granddaughter, we talked, I mean, neither one of them are doing it now, because we really talked to them. But they did it because everybody was doing it. So, I was like, "Well, everybody may be doing that, but that's, you know, it's bad for you." We talked about the lungs, what can happen, because I really feel like these are even worse than cigarettes. And so does cardiologists, by the way. Every cardiologist I've talked to, they're like, "Don't do that. Don't do that," you know? So, even the cardiologists believe this is not a good thing. You know, so, but is it addict, it's very addictive. So, what is it that we can provide for the kids at school? Is there a group that we can create? Some kind of counseling that they can meet, you know, once a day and go through it? Just like any other addictions, they have to have some kind of support to get off of it. So, we can't just say, "Stop doing this," because it's not going to work. It's trying to get a group of kids to start the process, because it's going to take a group of kids to start it, and then other kids will follow, as we all know. So, what can we do at the school level to help these kids realize that, one, this isn't good? They all know it's not good for them. That's, we don't have to educate these kids on that. They all know that. It's what can we do if they're addicted to it to help them get away from it? What kind of counseling can we give them? What kind of support can we give them? That's kind of more what I'm looking at. We all know it's bad. They all know it's bad. You know, I'm not saying parents are bad because they don't know their kids are doing it. Kids sneak and do things all the time. We know we did when we were kids. We know we didn't, you know, we snuck around. Our parents didn't know half the stuff we did until we got older and told them. And it's the same now. So, what is it that we can do to help them get away from this? Not just say they can't do it.
City Manager?
So, Director Arton and Ms. Friends from Public Health are here. And I wanted them to come and give the council an update on kind of what the proposed countywide TRL ordinance is about, so that you know that. Now, as was mentioned, I mean, this is just kind of one piece of the puzzle. And then, maybe we can, I mean, no one has the exact answer to the question you're asking, Vice Mayor, but we have some ideas about how to start really focusing on that. So, if it was okay.
One moment. Councilmember Perdak, did you have a question for these two?
I can wait until the City Manager is done, but yes, I do.
So, whenever you're ready, we'll.
Well, are we going to swap out the two groups here? That's why I wanted to get your.
I don't know how long they want to talk. We have an issue with our sort of public mic tonight, so. Or I'm happy to give up my seat here if you guys want to.
Discussion again. We have been coming several years prior. And we just want to thank you guys for the efforts that you've already put forward. We know that in 2018 and in 2019, you developed a moratorium to limit the tobacco retailers in Lake County, because you felt it was an important issue. We've had this discussion about TRL. And at the time, there was a DOJ grant that was even applied for here for the city of Clear Lake. So, we know that this is an area of concern for you as well. And I want to thank Becky and Greg for being here tonight, too, because the issue is going to take the entire community to address. It's families, students, our medical professionals, our law enforcement. It's going to take the entire village to address this issue, because the addiction level has reached a point of medical concern. So, like Mr. Flora had expressed, that we had several people come and meet with our Health Services Director and I regarding a tobacco retail license that would encompass the entire county. The biggest reason for that is because we know that if you live in certain areas of Clear Lake, you're in the unincorporated or you're in the city jurisdiction. We know that the same thing with Kelseyville and Lakeport. So, if the rules are vastly different, or there is no protection whatsoever, these children and youth will find a way to work around that system. So, if we address this concern as a county as a whole, let's find a baseline that we're willing to start at. Let's put some efforts into place that will begin protecting the youth, because we know from the youth, they're getting it by walking in the store. I had a fourth grader last year tell me he gave someone $20 that was standing on the sidewalk outside the store and told him, "Keep the change." So, we know that it's an issue. Can we regulate every single item that's a problem? No, but we have to start somewhere. So, when Mr. Claffey and Mr. Flora met with our folks from Public Health, as well as City of Lakeport and Mr. Sabatier, our Chair from the Board of Supervisors, we looked at a comprehensive TRL. And we started tearing every single part of that tobacco retail license apart. Why is this significant? And what can we do to come to a compromise? And I want to appreciate those of you that came to that meeting, because that was the first step in the future of this community, to build upon something that could potentially save the lives of our next generation of kids. So, they're going to be our leaders of this county. But if they are addicted to a substance at this level that Greg was mentioning, where they're going through 600 cigarettes every three days of nicotine, they're not going to be able to perform as athletes. They're not going to be able to perform as nurses and doctors and teachers. They're going to be hospitalized. So, what does the TRL look like for us? For, currently, we are going to obviously present to, we presented on Tuesday. There was a little technicality glitch that kind of postponed it a little bit. But we'll be coming back to address this at the County Board of Supervisors, as well as the City of Lakeport. And we're going to talk about an implementation plan. And what that looks like is, number one, education. Retailer education, community education. We want them to understand the law. And a lot of our retailers, the store may have been in the same place for decades, but it may have changed ownership five, 10, 15 times. So, they may never have had a state inspection. So, here in Lake County, our last inspection was 2018 from the state. 100% of the stores inspected failed. They all sold to minors. So, you fast forward, here we are, 2024, and there has been no state inspection, no regulation locally. We have no idea the intensity of what's happening. And as Greg had mentioned, we know that there's retailers that are selling flavored products either wide open or under the counter. If you ask for the right item, they will provide it for you. And that flavor ban was voted on in the state of California and passed. Here in Lake County, 58% of our voters said, "Yes, ban these flavors." Recently, I went through and did some store observations just for education, something that's tasked of my program to do by the state. And I had one retailer that I just wanted to share here in Clear Lake and the city limits, that not only told me that I will not sell vapes, but I won't sell flavored products. And this individual, every inspection I've ever done or observation at his store has never had them. And I've been in this program for seven years. And his thing was, he wanted me to know that he felt those products specifically market to children. But does he have, did he, for many years, have the option to do that? Of course. But he chose, that was his moral choice to not do so, because he felt like it specifically marketed to kids. So, our implementation process obviously will happen after a tobacco retail license is approved. Once it is approved in each of the jurisdictions, the County of Lake Environmental Health Department will oversee the application process, as well as the implementation and enforcement process of that ordinance that is passed. This is why we have chosen to look at a baseline policy that is the same countywide, so that our Health Services Department can take the weight of enforcement and implementation off the city jurisdictions. The other reason is that if you only have five or 10 retailers in your jurisdiction, then it could be a very costly licensing fee in order to fund a position to maintain this. So, by the county doing one department to oversee all of the enforcement and implementation, you have much more retailers. The fee can be smaller and still make it manageable. The other thing is, what does enforcement look like? So, this is something that the, everybody that met from each jurisdiction hashed out what enforcement looks like for them. And they were in consensus. Number one is, they felt if the penalty is strong enough, it will detour these folks from selling to minors. It will detour retailers from selling products on the black market illegally without a license, not a state license, not a local license. So, the number one thing that was decided is that if they are caught selling without a state license and a local license, well, that not only are they going to get a $5,000 fine, but they're not going to be approved to get a license from here on out. You've proven to us that you didn't go through the proper measures. You didn't get a state license. You are doing this illegally. And they decided that that was one thing that was very important. The other thing is, if you get caught selling to a minor, then you have a series of penalties and revocation, suspensions of your license. So, the first finding of violation was a 30-day suspension of selling tobacco, along with a $1,000 fine. The second finding of a violation, within a 60-month period, the license shall be suspended for 90 days, and the retailer should have a $2,500 fine. The third violation at this, at any location within a 60-month period will be a suspension for 120 days and a $5,000 fine. Upon finding a fourth or more violations within a 60-month period, the license shall be revoked, and no new license will be issued for that licensee for five years or 60 months past that violation. So, the group that met felt like stiff punishments. We need to prove a point. We need to get this under control now. So, we do have another opportunity that our department has decided to apply for a Department of Justice grant. It's due on the 28th of June. And just on Tuesday, our Board of Supervisors has given us approval to do so. That, we are also, I am meeting on Monday with our chiefs to talk to them about what a partnership and collaboration for the decoy operations. So, our department would bring on staff, those youths that are 18 to 20 years old, to be trained to work with our local law enforcement to do the decoy operations. So, we're excited to be able to communicate with the chiefs and our sheriff about that collaboration. So, we feel very strongly that even though we know that it may take some time for our jurisdictions to go through the process of approving a tobacco retail license, especially in all three jurisdictions, but this Department of Justice grant will allow us to start enforcement activities right away if we are approved for this grant. The deadline for the applications, June 28th. We should know by the end of July, and funding starts in October.
Councilmember Perdak?
Thank you very much. I answered one of my initial questions of what can we do as a legislative body to get some teeth into these ordinances? And thank you for that presentation. Second level of my question is looking at the schools. I'm very disappointed, but I understand the apathy of parents, and their just unwillingness to probably engage through our community. So, what I'm wondering is, in a penalty phase, children that are caught vaping or in possession of these products, in lieu of, or rather than suspension, is there something like the SARB process where parents can be directed to come in for their minor children, and either some of these penalties can be addressed that way? But I'm all for this, anything we can do to help. Yes, Liberty?
Let you know that the other hack of my program is to, we're tasked with building youth coalitions in our local high schools and maintaining them. And it is not a punitive measure. It is a voluntary measure. And we have had great success with students voluntarily coming. But we had developed a program with a partnership with Tribal Health, Behavioral Health, sorry, Youth Prevention Program, as well as myself. And we did a 12-week program. It was a pilot program that we did over at Upper Lake High School. And initially, we started with three students that we referred because they were caught using on campus. But at the end of that, we ended up with 25 students that were either, "Hey, I want to know what this is about." Maybe they didn't want to admit that they were using. They knew someone that was using, and they wanted to help them quit, or maybe it was a parent. But it was a huge success, 12 weeks. And these students stuck it out. We went from three to 25. And, you know, Behavioral Health came in and talked about the brain development and the addiction, whereas Tribal Health has a cessation program where they can work with children and youth. And then, I came in with the education component. And it was a great resource for the school as a pilot program. And, you know, they're learning about making healthy decisions for the rest of their life. You know, it's hard, because our 2B program here in Lake County, which is directed, facilitated through the Lake County Office of Education, is only Tier Two, sorry, Tier One funding, which is only for technical assistance. You know, they provide very little resources. So, you know, if they're able to apply the next round for, you know, a Tier Two funding, that would give direct instruction in classrooms. But it's difficult to navigate in the school systems without that funding and staff support to do that direct instruction, other than, you know, the weekend health class or, you know, the weekend PE where they talk about those things. But, you know, just collaborating with all of the different programs to see how we can work that out.
Appreciate that. So, not to really get down too much in the weeds. We've killed this horse. But with your board, what I was looking for is how we can work collaboratively to maybe get some teeth?
Like I said at the beginning, I know that this is where we solve the problem very good. But what it does do, it starts, it starts to do the same in the community. Here, we recognize this is a request, and we're not going to let it be. So, is that disruption that we see happen first to then?
Right. While you're talking, I'll. Why are you talking to Lakeport?
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah.
A team of really a grassroots approach to what are the tactical things that we can do? And we've already kind of started talking a little bit about who are those players that really need to be up the table in a smaller group to really lay out step one, step two, step three and step four that we can do on campus starting with.
I raised my pin when council or Vice Mayor Overton asked her question. Because physiologically, we know that this is very damaging to our, to our youth, especially as young as you've seen some of these kids. So I'm thinking, okay, so we pull away their access to these items through the stores. They're already tragically addicted. Um, what can we do to get them the help that they need? And that's why I was asking about that teeth. And will Adventist Health, Sutter, Tribal Health, will they be able to come to the rescue and basically offer them those sensation, cessation classes?
Absolutely. And that's what the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah. So to follow up on that, um, well, there's, there's one other policy thing that the council considered. Well, there's probably a few of them, but one that you've heard about before and that we'll be having a presentation on in the next month or so is, um, ordinance related to u- using tobacco in multifamily housing. You know, it's a lot of jurisdictions have, uh, eliminated that. So we'll begin a presentation on that. And then the other thing is really trying to, um, so there is a innovation some of the, the healthcare agencies are doing focused on tobacco policy, kind of looking at the whole county. So we'll see what comes out of that later this year. But, you know, we want to help, cannot tell unified now. So we're going to work together to put together a task force that includes those healthcare agents, public health, possibly a retailer, some of the students, law enforcement, and get in a room and come up with all the ideas we can to figure out what we can do about this issue.
LCOE on this, too?
We haven't sent out invites yet, but we're happy to include anyone who might have an impact.
Vice Mayor Overton.
And I think this is definitely something that needs to happen. My, one thing about this resolution, because that's kind of what we're really talking about. We have to kind of get all the things is, um, if we set this in place, are the retailers going to have, I, I mean, I feel like they need to have to do a class. You know, so there, that, is that required through this licensing?
Yeah, it's part of the implementation plan. So we'll set up a committee and then develop what that implementation plan looks like. And then we'll have community meetings in each of the different areas where we invite them to come and learn about not only the state laws, but what our ordinance looks like and what is the plan for implementation.
I, I don't want an invitation, no offense. I don't want an invitation. I want a requirement. I want it to be required that they have to do this class in order to be able to sell tobacco in our, in our city. I mean, I think it should be required. Because they're just, like you said, they haven't been checked. The state hasn't been on this. I think this is our chance to really educate them and get on it and really know who's in charge in these places also. Because sometimes we think somebody's really, and yet it's somebody else that's really in charge. So I think it should be just absolutely a requirement.
We could have that as part of the application process. They come to the class similar to, um, if they get a food permit, they have to come to a help.
Right, right, right.
And so, um, we can use that, you know, I can take that back and.
And second up is, as far as the school is concerned, if we do this and you're going to be doing, I think definitely classes and training and some counseling. Um, when the kids are caught with these devices, is instead of suspending them, because I don't believe in suspensions at all, by the way. I think that's really, that just helps the student get by with stuff. But that this is, is like, uh, the, uh, that this required for them to go to this, I like the 12-week thing. I think that's a good, stable, um, uh, weeks that they'd have to go to. Um, and I don't believe in just once a week though, unfortunately. I believe it needs to be like three times a week, in my opinion. Um, but I think that's where we can direct these kids to get them into getting some help. You know, just kind of like when they get caught drunk, drunk and driving, they have to go to classes. They get caught doing something like this, they have to go to these classes. So, uh, and the parents should be involved. So my opinion on both of those, I'm done.
I just, I just wanted to add one more thing. Um, after their obviously initial education, um, part of the very first visit would be a compliance check to make sure that they have everything that they need as far as our state act stickers at every register. You know, letting everybody know that we card 21. Um, everything down to what's being sold and, you know, every detail. So that first visit is going to be education. Okay, we see that you're missing these stickers. We see that you are still selling a flavored product. These things need to be corrected. You have 14 days to correct them. We'll be back for our second one. And if that, if these things haven't been corrected, then that's when the violations start. So they will get an education when they get their license and then a compliance check prior to violation. So they will have ample opportunity to follow the law.
Councilmember Suton.
Um, personally, I'm ready to ban all these vaping products. Like, that's just me. Uh, I have a little concern. It, will this ordinance, this proposed ordinance be applicable to tribal lands?
Um, so they are under federal, um, regulation, not state or local regulation. And so, uh, we will not be doing inspections for, um, tribal lands that are federally recognized. So, um, some, in some cases, there are tribes that have state tobacco licenses and there's others that are federally. So if they are federal, no, they will not be in this, uh, any free jurisdictions. But if they are, um, if they hold a state tobacco license, then they would fall under this.
Because we, you know, we have potential new business that.
I believe that I saw that they agreed to uphold the state laws for this, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we have no jurisdiction to inspect there. But, um, the agreement that we made with, and, uh, Councilmember Suton is referring to the travel center, the Elam Indian col- colony is planning to build. And we did ask them to agree to follow state law, which they did put in that agreement. But beyond that, uh, we don't have, you know, much we can do.
And I would also like to add that, um, that it's really important to build relationship. And so that will be part of our job. Like the, the rest of the county would, would, um, you know, we're implementing this policy to protect our youth. And, uh, we would like to build a, a relationship with you as well. And how could we, um, move towards you following these rules as well? And I know that we do have some of our, um, uh, tribal casinos that have continued to say smoke-free even after the pandemic to protect their workers and their customers. And, you know, so it is possible to build that relationship around something like this as well.
Yeah, I want to, um, oh, sorry, Councilmember Kram.
Just a quick question. When you enact the, the TRL, um, how are you going to notify those stores that are already, that have a state license that are selling tobacco products? How will you notify them of this new TRL and that you're?
Yeah, so we'll, um, we have a list from, um, you know, we can request the list from the state of who currently holds a tobacco license. And, um, like I said, we'd invite them to come to community meetings. But if they don't show, then we knock on their door and say, hey, this is the state law. This is the new jurisdiction law. And, um, we'd like to meet with you to, to go over this.
Will there be cooperation from the state if we pass this?
Yeah, so the state gives local jurisdictions to implement, um, ordinances and policies that are stronger than theirs. They just don't allow you to void their licenses requirements.
Thank you.
Um, couple of statements. So I, thank you for approaching, uh, our meeting a couple of weeks ago with an open mind. Um, you know, getting down to the baseline that all three jurisdictions can agree upon, I think is really important. You know, my focus was, um, really youth smoking, um, and bad actors in the retail space. Um, so what I wanted to see was a, a policy that stuck close to state laws. One that doesn't restrict adults from making legal purchases. And it's really easy to get excited about this and, and try to overreach a little bit. But I think it's really important to allow adults to make legal purchases so that they aren't pushed to the fringes and they don't have to move out of our jurisdiction to, um, do something that they should be allowed to do. One of the things that was suggested that, um, both us and Lakeport really pushed back on was density restrictions. And I know we had that here for a little bit. But all those density restrictions will apply to the cities more than the unincorporated areas. So thank you for allowing us to take that out as well. That was, that was something that was a bit of a concern. Um, and then finally, one of my biggest issues was minimizing the burden on good faith business owners. We have a lot of retailers here who are doing it and doing it the right way. And, um, any policy that we put in place, I didn't want the fee to be so onerous that, um, you know, there's a lot of pushback from them. We really pushed and, and thank you for, for going through all of it, really stiff penalties. We want to focus on the bad actors here, the folks who aren't doing it legally, who are selling to minors. And this policy gives us the tools to finally enforce this. Um, through your office, does, does it allow, um, Clear Lake PD to also, yeah?
Office will be present on Monday's meeting.
Beautiful. So, so overall, I think, um, we, we came to a really good place and I thank everyone who was involved with that. Um, I guess my question is around the county's action. So they pulled it off their agenda on Tuesday. Um, are you expecting significant changes in what they'll finalize?
Um, no, it was a technicality. Um, so it was just a, a minor detail that was missed and it wasn't part of the policy. So, um, they, uh, we, we are addressing two policies there. So they wanted to model Clear Lake's smoke-free policy that you passed in 2019. And so that was the, the first one that we were addressing. And, um, it was just the TRL that there was a little bit of a technicality for. So we pulled that and so they asked us to bring them both back August 6th.
Excellent. All right, um.
But process wise though, I mean, so that's moved forward. I believe the agreement that we made when we met was that the implementation on the TRL would go into effect at the beginning of 25. Um, but we'll actually be bringing, um, an ordinance before the city council related to this as well. And, um, enacting this and delegating authority for enforcement of this to the county. But, um, we'll also have language that for one reason or another, if we wanted to do our own enforcement, there would be space within our ordinance to do that.
Excellent. All right, I'm going to decline all future questions and open up to the public. Do anyone here in the chamber have any questions or comments?
Well, here he comes. He'll be brief.
I'm limited to three minutes, so you guys are lucky. Uh, Bruno Sabatier, City of Clear Lake. Um, I can't promise you exactly what will happen at the Board of Supervisors as far as any potential changes that will occur to the current ordinance as it stands. Uh, I will say that I believe that we all want to do something about access to tobacco, which includes vapes, uh, for our youth. Uh, I would like to believe there is a universal, um, cause and a reason to want to combat that. Um, but again, we'll have to see what the, the overall end result will be. I, I do know that there was at least one supervisor who had some issues, but we never got to the actual conversation regarding it. Uh, but that is one out of, uh, five and we only need three, uh, votes to be able to move this forward. So I'm pretty confident that we're going to find something to be able to move it forward and any changes. I hope that they're subtle enough that it does not diminish its impact. Uh, I couldn't agree more with the conversation that's been had here, uh, at the council level. Uh, we need to do something. We need to take action. I'm, I'm embarrassed that we know since 2018 that 100% of the stores surveyed failed and that no action has been taken. Uh, that is an embarrassment to me in the position that I'm in. And I know that unfortunately COVID was one of those excuses where we were ready to do something, but then we pivoted and focused on other things. Uh, but we got to get back to something that is going to make an impact. And I think that there's these really long-term potential. Uh, yes, we don't want to tell adults what they should, uh, do or not do. Uh, some people are drinking whiskey rather than something much lighter and much safer. Uh, but at the same time, uh, I think that if we help our youth not access this, we are going to see a decrease in tobacco use in adults in the sense that the addiction didn't start when they were so young and so malleable to being addicted for life. Um, it, it, it takes a mature mind to do something and be able to control yourself or to be able to kick those bad habits. Um, and I just think that, um, we're going to see an overall change if we do this, especially if we help to target the youth. So that's my comment and, uh, I hope that you guys can support this and, uh, maybe even send a delegation to help, uh, in the conversation on August 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
I'll bring it back to council, uh, Councilmember Perdak.
So we've been talking about tobacco products, um, but one we did, didn't talk about is, um, marijuana or, or other cannabis related, um, for THC and other, um, ingestibles through vape. Is, is, that any of those laws apply to this, um, or is it excluded?
One area that it does address is that currently state laws says that if you sell cannabis products, you cannot sell nicotine products. So in our policy, it mirrors that and says if you sell nicotine products, you cannot sell cannabis.
But, okay, but would this?
Because it's two separate items, um, this specific one only addresses nicotine products.
But does your office regulate cannabis distribution?
We do.
Councilmember Kram.
Uh, yes, thank you. I think we're all pretty well convinced that we need to do this. And thank you for your presentation and we need to, uh, support that from the city level. My question for Supervisor Sabatier is, will our strong support if it's, uh, if, uh, if your board hears it, will it help to stiffen their resolve a little bit?
I would like to believe that your voice matters, uh, when we're looking at a countywide effort to make change in our communities. Uh, that's why I invite you. I can't speak that it would necessarily change the minds of individual supervisors. Uh, but I know having a, uh, us, uh, solitary effort of all of us as one, uh, it would make a loud voice and a, and a large impact. Um, so I would like to believe that your voice matters. So that's why I invite you.
All right, seeing no other questions, um, staff, it sounds like the direction is to bring us back an ordinance. Does that sound appropriate?
Yep.
All right, do you need, do you require any other direction here?
Mayor.
All right. Everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this and, and we really hope we can help. All right. Moving on to item 19, agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of body worn cameras, mobile audio and video systems, tasers and digital storage for the police department. And I imagine this is Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Okay, this evening I'm going to go over, um, some of the details of a proposed agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated. I'll go over a little bit of the history of the, uh, current products we have with them. And then once I'm done, I will turn it over to Daniel Britt, um, our Axon account executive, and Jacob Boro, a senior systems engineer to give a little information or, uh, possibly answer any questions that council may have. Currently, the police department contracts with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for our body worn camera system, mobile audio and video Mav system, taser program and cloud-based digital evid- evidence management. Body worn cameras are assigned to sworn personnel, community service officers and code enforcement. Essentially all of, all of our personnel to go out in field. essentially all of, all of our personnel to go out in field. Body-worn camera footage, along with other digital evidence such as photos, videos, audio files, are securely stored in the cloud at evidence.com. The current contract approved by this city council in November of 2022 costs $36,429 per year, and our audio and video Mav systems are installed in all of our assigned mark patrol vehicles. Basically, in these, we have a forward-facing camera. Pinshield looks outside the vehicle, gives a wide-angle view of what's in front of the patrol vehicle. And then, there is a additional camera that records in the backseat of the vehicle in the prisoner compartment area. Mav camera footage is also securely stored in the cloud at evidence.com. The current contract approved by this council in May of 2022 costs $41,747 per year and expires in 2027. TASER devices are assigned to sworn personnel, community service officers, and code enforcement, essentially the same personnel as the body-worn cameras to all our field personnel. TASER data is securely stored in the cloud at evidence.com. The current contract approved by four of these council members in 2019, one council member was not on the council at that time, costs $17,704 per year and expires this year in a few months. The total cost per year for the current systems is $95,861. So, just wanna talk a little bit about the systems. With the Fleet 3 system, that's the mobile audio and video system. It has a hub that controls and gets input and has sensors and triggers for the other devices. The tasers, activation of the tasers are being turned on would activate the in-car cameras, would also activate the body-worn cameras. There's numerous other sensors, including speed activation, braking activation, opening the rear doors, turning the lights on, turning the siren on, that activate the Fleet system, which in turn activates the in-car cameras and the body-worn cameras. Recently, staff obtained a quote from Axon Enterprises Incorporated for a 10-year purchase agreement for 29 body-worn cameras, 29 tasers, and 17 mobile audio/video recorders. The agreement includes all-related hardware and accessories, unlimited secure data storage, and full warranties. The proposed agreement costs $99,064 per year for a total of $990,642 over its life. The increase of roughly just under $3,000 per year with the life of the contract for the 10 years, there would be no increases in the cost over the 10 years, which is a substantial savings to the city currently. And previously, when the shorter contracts expire, the price generally goes up every time. So, to be able to lock in the fixed price for that time period results in a significant savings to us. The proposed agreement includes all the items in our current three separate agreements, plus additional body-worn camera docking stations. It also includes unlimited data storage on the secure cloud-based storage system and replacement warranties for all of the hardware, the in-car cameras, the body-worn cameras, and the TASER devices. There are no additional cost equipment upgrades included during the agreement at the following times. The body-worn cameras would be replaced September of 2024, March of 2027, September of 2029, March of 2032, and September of 2034. The mobile audio/video system in the vehicles would, which we've had for, we haven't had them for quite a year yet. They would be replaced in August of 2029 and August of 2034. The tasers would be replaced in September of 2024, so this year, in a couple of months, and then March of 2030. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Daniel and Jake with Axon to provide a little information. And then, you can ask them questions or me questions if you have any.
Chief, Chief Hobbs, thank you for the introduction. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us on here today. My name's Daniel Burt, I'm the Axon Account Executive for, for the city. And then, I have my Solutions Engineer Jake Boro on here as well. So, just to summarize kind of what Chief discussed, what we're doing here is we're consolidating three contracts. Am I, am I, am I being heard, by the way? I can't, is the audio coming through? Hello?
You know, the audio is coming through on others who are on the Zoom, but I don't believe they're hearing you in the chamber, so let's hold tight.
Okay.
I'm texting with them now. We're gonna take a brief recess, or reconvene at 8:15.
Where are you going, Tina? Hi, Tina.
Okay, I'm bringing us back to session here. Chief, if you'd like to continue?
All right, I got the phone set up with Daniel. So, he's just gonna give some brief information, and then we'll, we'll book the open for questions.
All right, Chief, I'm gonna test this audio out. Can you guys hear me in the chambers?
We can.
I don't know if, I don't know if Bruno can hear.
It was Council, Chief, thanks for having us here today. I'm just gonna basically summarize what Chief just discussed. So, what we're doing here is we're gonna consolidate all of your contracts, your Fleet contract, your body camera contract, and your TASER contract, so that it's one contract and one invoice per year for everything technology-related that the city has. We're taking the total cost, we're splitting it over 10 years, even, even payments. So, that will assist both with affordability and predictability for the department and for the city. You'll have warranties on your hardware for the next 10 years, as well as upgrades throughout the duration of the contract. So, I'll, I'll open it up to council for any questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Overton?
Sorry, I'm looking at the contract here, and it's, when we were talking about storage, you were saying it's unlimited, but here in the contract, under FUSA, uh, appendix here on number two, where it says product limit, it doesn't say unlimited, even though that sounds like a lot. But over the years, that's not a lot. So, what is it? Is it unlimited? Because if it is, what needs to be in this, in this contract?
So, it is unlimited storage, and it's actually listed on the, the quote portion of the contract. You can see that on page three, actually, under A la carte software. Line item 73686, Axon Evidence Storage, Unlimited Axon Device.
Yeah, quotes are really wonderful, thank you very much, but contracts are binding. So, I don't see that in the contract itself. Where it says unlimited, I'm not seeing that. Maybe I'm missing it somewhere, because there's a lot of pages here. But on page, on page 30, I think it says 30 of 43. So, on page 30, which is the storage, I don't, it's saying, you know, like, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, so.
Yeah, so the, all of our quotes are that they are governed by our standard MSPA, and what is listed on the quote is the storage that we'll be providing.
Okay, so this will not, this is just a sample contract agreement. But the quote will be directed in this contract, am I correct?
If, if, if you guys would request wording for unlimited storage in the contract, I would have to work with our contract team to do that. I don't have the ability to do that, but if that's something that is requested, we could certainly put that in the MSPA. I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay, well, I'm requesting if it's unlimited, that it'd actually be in the contract that it's unlimited, so not just in the quote. Thank you.
Daniel, doesn't in, I mean, in numerous spots in the Terms of Service, it refers for the items in the, the, the software and the hardware, it refers to the quote for what we're actually getting, correct?
Uh, listed, so you're asking if the, if the quote is listed as an exhibit within that contract?
Yeah, I'm saying it's several, I, I've read in, in the Terms of Service that for what we're actually purchasing, it refers you to look at the, the sales quote.
That is correct. So, if you look at, on the actual quote, page 16, it says, "The Axon Master Services and Purchasing Agreement. This quote is limited to and conditional upon the acceptance of the provisions set forth herein in Axon's Master Services and Purchasing Agreement," and then it's linked there as well. So, typically, by signing our, our quotes, our contract, you are agreeing to the terms within the MSPA.
Okay.
The same way that it was done the, the last time for the previous contracts.
Okay, as long as it's in the contract somewhere to refer back to the quote, then that's, that's fine.
It is, the, really, the first paragraph of the agreement references the quote and indicates to me that it's, which is common with our stuff, that it's incorporated in the agreement by reference.
And I was just looking at this, where it had different, you know, for, uh, different things here, it was different storage stuff, and you're seeing unlimited. I just wanna make sure that it is somewhere in the contract. So, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Perdok?
Just for operations and business, I saw that our attorney was trying to comment when we're having the audio problems and voice connect.
Yeah, he's, he was just letting us know that he could hear them fine, so.
I just didn't know if he had something to add to this.
I don't, he's been texting me, but he hasn't had anything to add.
He has reviewed the agreement and the Terms of Service also.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the chamber. If you have a comment, please come forward. Seeing no movement. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Bring it back to council.
Just a quick comment, this is a very vital piece of equipment. Actually, all, all the pieces are very vital, and I just, I support this, and thank you for the diligent work you did, Chief, in your department.
Councilmember Kramer?
Uh, yes, I'll echo what Councilmember Perdok just said, and thank you, remember your name.
You were, you were stumbling there for a minute.
Anyway, I want to thank you, Chief, for taking quite a bit of time the other day to go through, through that contract with me and over all of those things. And so, I understood everything before we came in and didn't have to ask some of the questions. But I appreciate what you're working, you could work on it, and I think it's a great deal. We're locking our price in, and it sounds like we're getting more equipment than what you had on the three prior deals. So, I'm all forward, and if we're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make it.
I see no other council members, so please.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Axon, Axon Enterprise Inc. for the purchase of body-worn cameras, mobile audio and video systems, tasers, and digital storage for the police department.
Second, I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Perdok. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 20, consideration of adoption of a memorandum of understanding with the Clear Lake Police Officer Association for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. Ms. Swanson?
Honorable Mayor and council members, staff is pleased to present for your consideration tonight the memorandum, oops, sorry, of understandings for the Clear Lake Police Officers Association and the Clear Lake Middle Management Association. These MOUs acknowledge the vital contributions of our employees to Clear Lake's success and emphasizes the importance of retaining our team while maintaining financial responsibility and sustainability within budget constraints. The redline version of each of the proposed MOUs are included in the agenda packet. To begin with the POA MOU, a few of the highlights. The term is a two-year agreement effective July 1 and terminating on June 30 of 2026. The wage increase is a 3% base salary rate increase, 3% in 2024 and 3% in 2025. It also has the provision for the ability to buy back up to 80 hours of vacation It also has the provision for the ability to buy back up to eighty hours of vacation time per fiscal year. It increases the capped hours of accrued compensation time to one sixty from eighty hours and decreases the number of hours the employee can cash out of accrued comp to forty hours. There is also the addition of language to allow for a walking pad treadmill for dispatchers. And it increases the hours from three to four of overtime compensation for court time provided the employee calls and confirms their court appearances necessary. A few other things, it clarifies language in the application of FMLA and CFRA and Pregnancy Disability Act leaves, along with leave of absences without pay and specifies how benefits such as health benefits and voluntary deductions are paid if the employee is on unpaid leave. Like I say, you have the redline version in the packet and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson, any questions from the Council? All right, I'll open it up to public, anyone in the chamber have a question? Seeing none, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll bring it back to Council and I believe we have.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Clear Lake and the Clear Lake Police Department Officers Association for the period starting July first, twenty twenty-four, fourth to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sluton, a second from Councilmember Kramer, please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, moving on to item, one moment. Councilmember Perdak.
I didn't get a chance to comment, but I wanted to thank you for your work and also the members of the POA. This has been just a really great process of us being able to appreciate our employees. As when I came on the Council, I think we were the least paid in the county as far as our share, our police officers went. Now we're the highest paid, as I understand it, or at least very competitive. Our retention is fantastic and we almost have all our positions filled. Is that correct, Chief? Outstanding work, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Number twenty-one, consideration of adoption of a memorandum of understanding with the Clear Lake Middle Management Association for July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Swanson.
Right, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, again, we have a proposed memorandum of understanding with the MMA to begin July first of this year and continue through June thirtieth of twenty-six, a two-year agreement. The wage increase is a three percent salary base rate increase in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, same as the POA. The MMA additionally has a, excuse me, a longevity pay of one percent per year after fifteen years and up to twenty years of service to the city. The MMA has a memorialization of the employee probationary period. And like the POA MOU, the MMA MOU also has provisions regulating the application for an industrial disability retirement through CalPERS and clarifies language in the application of FMLA, CFRA and Pregnancy Disability Leaves, along with leaves of absence without pay.
Any questions from Council? Seeing none, any comments here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll bring it back to Council.
May I make a motion? I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Clear Lake and the Clear Lake Middle Management Association for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
A motion from Councilmember Sluton, a second from Councilmember Kramer, please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the Council.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I got a call from Clear Lake Waste Solutions earlier this week. I had let the Council know that they were going to be implementing monthly billing starting July first. Had some issues with their accounting system and there's going to be some delay on that, so just letting you know. It's been frustrating over the last couple of weeks, quite a bit of vandalism in various areas of the city. Bathrooms, Austin Park again vandalized. You're sure you've heard about the fire of batting cages over at Bud Park. I don't know what to say, it's just difficult to track these folks down and hold them accountable. But, you know, we invest so much and, you know, put so much work in trying to improve things and it's frustrating to see our own community not respected. You may have seen news today related to the California Business Roundtable measure that was supposed to go on the ballot, and this is the Business Association of Large Corporations that was attempting to really stifle our ability to raise fees and would open up to a lot of lawsuits and basically require pretty much any type of fee increase to, to go on the ballot. And just a lot of complications retroactive. The Supreme, California Supreme Court determined that it was not a constitutional measure and it will not be going on the November ballot. So feel like that that was a good win for this year, although this isn't the first time that they've tried this and I'm sure there'll be another version coming back soon. But, uh, let's see. Another lawsuit was filed against the City of Clear Lake last week by the Coin Nation. This is related to a, what should be a very routine road improvement project, Burns Valley Road and Arrowhead Road. This is not one of the Measure B streets, but we, this is something that's grant funded through CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds. Unfortunately, based on, you know, a poor understanding of, well, the law and the project itself, they have filed this lawsuit, so we'll be working with that moving forward. It's just, you know, really kind of frustrating and shocking the approach. I mean, we had a meeting with them recently where they're even gotten to the point where they're insisting that we provide tribal monitoring for mowing grass. So the saga continues there. Two final things, you may have noticed the mural going up over here on the police department, which looks really nice. There's one panel that's almost finished, they're doing some touch up and they'll be installing another panel towards the south, I guess. So that'll be nice. I think this is all funded through the Clean California Grant that we received. There's one more that will be starting hopefully relatively soon that's going to be very prominent interest to the city along Lake Shore Drive. There's going to be a very long mural on the upper portion of the Hilltop Building saying welcome to Clear Lake with kind of the old retro letters that have the images in them, so that'll be pretty neat. And then the final thing I wanted to share is some of the work that our Recreation Events Coordinator's been doing of the youth center this summer has been established as a satellite location for free lunches for kids up to eighteen years old, Monday through Friday. So that's my report.
Thank you, City Manager, Councilmember Sluton.
I attended only one other meeting, that was the joint meeting of the Yuba Kill, Yuba Community College District Board and their foundation are starting on some programs to raise funds to athletic programs, but I don't think it's in the card for this campus. But so anyway, there's really not much to report on that, except that they, they have identified a new and approved the hiring of a new dean for the, for our Dela County Campus of Woodland Community College. It will be starting, I believe, mid-July.
Councilmember Perdak.
I attended no specific meetings, but I did want to thank the city staff, Public Works Director Leva and our Director for Recreation, Tina Vermontes, for helping me in, in coordinating the room usage at our community center for the memorial and celebration of life for former mayor Bob Malley and Deputy Sheriff 438. He did a lot of community service through his life. He owned a business here, he managed two, two businesses, the water park and, and Mindo Mill Lumber. He just was a, a good fixture, he also served on the Planning Commission of the county for a number of years. And we had a very good turnout. The building looks great, looking forward to seeing everything get finished. And I know you let us in there prematurely, but since he was mayor at the time that was approved and built, that was very important, I think, for some of his family members to see that and see his name on that plaque of the building. So kudo to all and thank you very much for all you did to make that happen for the former mayor.
Councilmember Kramer.
Thank you. I've attended several meetings since last, our last council meeting, clerk, right before last. Nothing really of great importance, I guess, to report. Councilmember Perdak and I and Supervisor Sabachi all attended APC, LTA, SAF meeting last week. I guess probably the only thing of note there is they talked, Caltrans talked about Canocti Corridor Project and the connecting projects that they are looking at between now and what, twenty thirty-one, I think, which would be a lot of work along Highway twenty, a lot of work on Highway twenty-nine. Really didn't talk too much about Highway fifty-three, so of course I brought that up. I think Supervisor Sabachi, I did, he did too. Particularly concerned about the intersection that between twenty-nine and fifty-three and obviously the local traffic and the impact of, of increased truck traffic, which is the purpose of this whole thing, is to take truck traffic off of Highway twenty, divert it onto fifty-three to twenty-nine and around so they aren't driving along the lake. So a lot of concerns on that over the next few years. I, it'll probably be fifteen years before anything happens, but it is of concern. And that's about all of the, all of the meetings that I have to report on today.
Vice Mayor Overton.
I don't really have any meetings necessary to report on, but I do want to say our, our, I think our Public Works is doing a wonderful job with our park. It's the best I've ever seen it look. They were so quick to come in and, and help with the, the community center, like, I was amazed, like one hour they had it all done. I was like very impressed with them, they're, they're great workers, I think is one of the best departments we've had in, since I've been here. So I just want to really reiterate how great our park is looking. I just don't ever remember seeing it look this good, so I am so proud of them. And, and thank you for doing such a wonderful job. Our director is, is, you know, new to the decision, but when she came on and she really took it on and I, I think we did a very good thing there. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and also thanks to the staff for the budgets. I know that was a really hard thing, I know we're on a tight little, little tight string here and, and we still want to get all these things done, but, I mean, I know that everybody spent a lot of time and I do appreciate all your guys' hard work, so thank you.
We have a do-over for Councilmember Sluton.
Yeah, I want to thank our city manager for his presentation this morning at the judge's breakfast. Excellent, and I think it opened some eyes on how the city internally works and you were commended for that, thank you.
Well, I have nothing to report. It all starts with the sound strategy and a solid budget and that allows all of our departments to thrive. So thank you all for the work you're doing and please keep it up for another year because you're doing a superb job. Future agenda items, does anyone have anything to add? Seeing nothing, we are now going to move to closed session, thank you all for joining us today.